This regular board meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I just want to extend a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personal appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I just want to ask right now if you would please turn off your cell phones to silent if you have not already done so. And really do appreciate the time that you have taken to join us and for your interest in Waco Independent School District.
Este junta regular de Waco ISD está convocada. Les extiendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presentes y los que nos observan por televisión. También los quiero compartir con todos sus conferencias. Están disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esta página puede escoger su idioma así toda la información que fue discutida es disponible para todos. Por favor, se apaga su teléfono celular. Les agradecimos el tiempo que compartimos con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD.
Wanted to go ahead and every board meeting we will be reading from our ethical standards. So we as board members will always have equity and attitude, meaning we will be fair, just, and impartial in all decisions and actions. We will accord others the respect that we wish for ourselves. We will encourage expressions of different opinions and listen with an open mind to others' ideas. With that, Ms. Boyd, are there any? None? I just wanted to also take time to thank you for all of your hard work. You are always behind the scenes, but you really do make it run seamlessly and smoothly, and we will definitely miss you. And thank you for mentoring Renee for, oh, sorry.
Charles, Renee Charles.
Charles, Ms. Charles. So thank you. We look forward to working with you and, but Monica, you will definitely be missed. If you would please pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, Thank you. We'll move on to item number four, which is special recognition and our pledge leaders. So if everyone would stand as we say the pledge.
I'm gonna begin now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Madam President, trustees, Dr. Kinkanon. We're going to begin with our pledge leaders. Each month, one campus selects two students to lead the pledge of allegiance at the regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. For the month of June, Zenaria Hughes from Caesar Chavez Middle School was selected for this honor. Zenaria is an eighth grade and is a honor roll student. Her favorite subjects are science and math, and she participates in basketball, track, and softball, select, and Little League. When she gets older, Zenaria wants to be a veterinarian or an ER nurse. Thank you to her mother, Joanne Hughes, for being here tonight and sharing your wonderful daughter with us. Next, we have our National History Day contest winners. In April 2023, Katerina Telup, Emma Clark Martinez, and Finley Ritter secured a spot on the National History Day competition. The contest was held at the University of Maryland College Park from June 11th through June 15th. Congratulations to Telup, Clark Martinez, and Ritter, who won third place out of 74 teams in the National History Day Junior Group performance for their performance of "Is There a Doctor in the House?", "The Tale of Dr. Seraphine", "Sarah Josephine Baker", and "Typhoid Mary". And thank you to our Fine Arts Director, Larry Carpenter, and Board Member Jim Patton for all of your work with this group. Next, we have our Greater Waco Chamber, Waco Under Forty. The Greater Waco Chamber recently announced the 2023 Waco Under Forty nominees. Waco Under Forty is an opportunity for the best and brightest from a diverse group of professions and causes to gather and receive much deserved recognition. The program recognizes rising young leaders who have distinguished themselves in their careers and in the community. Nominees are evaluated using these criteria: career achievement, community service, involvement, innovation, and leadership. Mountain View Elementary School Principal Carrie Detlifson was named a Waco Under Forty nominee by the Greater Waco Chamber of Commerce. Nominees represent not only the young leaders who demonstrate a tremendous positive impact in their respective industries, but also who go beyond the call of duty by volunteering their personal time and give back to the community. Detlifson is one of 14 honorees from a group of 45 nominees who will be recognized at a celebration event scheduled for November 16th at Bird Colgan Ford. Yes, and we will share that. Yes, ma'am. And last but not least, is our community partner. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner making a difference for our students at Waco ISD with the award for the Outstanding Community Partner. That recognition celebrates the theme for the 2022-2023 school year "Lead From the Heart" and acknowledges the impact that our community partners make in the lives of our students and staff. In June, the district is recognizing the Waco Housing Authority. Here to accept the award is Melissa Johnson, Director of Community Services. During the pandemic, President and CEO Millet Hopping and a team of Waco ISD administrators met to determine the best course of action for our students that live in the Estella Maxi, Kate Ross, and South Terrace Recreational Center complexes. As Waco ISD was moving forward with our one-to-one initiative to assist with remote instruction, the Waco Housing Authority volunteered to offer our students of Waco ISD a safe and filtered Wi-Fi connection that gave our students the ability to have reliable and Children's Internet Protection Act compliant access to educational resources during an unprecedented period of our lives. When many were reliant completely on the internet, students who reside in these locations are still receiving the internet services via this partnership today. We are thankful for the Waco Housing Authority and look forward to a continued partnership for our students' success. Thank you. That concludes our special recognitions for tonight.
We will move on to item number five, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Kinkanon.
All right. Good evening. I'm gonna start with sharing a little bit about summer school. You guys have probably seen all the beautiful pictures floating out on our social media sites for our summer enrichment camps, and I think we previously highlighted those for you. But I wanted to mention that we had more than 2,000 students attending summer school in the month of June, and that was a huge undertaking, a lot of work for staff. And so I'm just so thankful for our teachers, everyone who helped, administrators and parents who helped to make that summer school just a really great experience and a huge success. And you probably saw plenty of pictures about that, too. I think it was Camp Thrive this year. It was really nice. We also had credit recovery. There was supplemental instruction. There was a focus on literacy and math, and as well as all kinds of engaging activities in all core content areas that were offered, and extended learning for students in all grade levels, even for some of our youngest learners. Today was the last day of our bilingual summer school program. That was a four-week program that served 86 pre-K and kindergarten students. That was offered to our youngest emergent bilingual learners, and it featured a strong focus on literacy and math and included a special parent engagement component. Summer professional development, this is always one of my favorites in the summer. And beginning in June and going all the way through early August, we will have had more than 260 professional development sessions in the district or at Region 12 for our teachers, administrators, and staff. And those sessions touched on topics from student behavior, discipline and safety, to technology use in the classroom, as well as targeted academic areas from math academies for elementary to best practices in our gifted and talented classrooms. This morning, I started my day with 16 of our teachers out in a special place for a two-day literacy retreat with internationally recognized literacy leader, Dr. Kiling Beers. And we are just so blessed to have her living in our area where we can tap into her expertise. She was previously the senior advisor for secondary reading at the Teachers College at Columbia University, is a Yale graduate, and is incredibly smart and very, very good at literacy. And it was just fantastic to get to sit and talk with our teachers about good instructional practices in the classroom. So I enjoyed that very much, and the teachers still have another day yet tomorrow, out in a beautiful setting out off of Methodist Ranch Road. We also, for summer PD, had, for our professional staff, we had book studies this summer. Those are still going. Our CNI team hosted a two-day Level Up Leading Engagement at All Levels conference on Tuesday and Wednesday of this week, and I was able to attend and speak with some of our teachers there, and there were some fantastic sessions again that were offered. And then we'll be offering next month a five-day behavior boot camp for new teachers to Waco ISD, and that was something that we started last year, was a full week, and we'll be doing that again this year. We had some great feedback from our teachers who attended last year, and so we're continuing that. And then we'll be bringing our district leaders together at the end of July for a two-day leadership retreat at Camp Allen, and I'm excited about that. Okay, next item is our summer projects, and these are kind of our unsung heroes. And what a great collage of pictures we have to share of our just really fantastic employees who have really done some great work. And there's not a campus this summer that hasn't benefited from their work and the thoughtful planning of our facilities and operations staff. So I want to thank Gloria Barrera, Alex Villanueva, and all of the team for their work, and that includes our custodians and all of our facilities and maintenance groups. And they started after the last day of school, and they have been busy deep cleaning, repairing walls, painting, updating lighting, you name it. They're also overseeing the installation of new HVAC units at Cedar Ridge and at Providence Heights Elementary Schools, and I know there was some at West Avenue, some work going on there yesterday when I was in the building. They're installing new, we have new flooring and carpeting installations in some places across the district. We have additional fencing being added and/or some new fencing and some updates to door hardware, and the list goes on. It's just a really busy time of the year for our staff, for our custodians, for our maintenance staff, our facility staff, and I'm just really thankful for them and all of their work to improve and maintain our facilities. Thank you, Gloria. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Good stuff. And then finally, we are nearing the finish line of the completion of the GW Carver Middle School, and that's the first of our projects to be completed from the 2021 bond program. I took a tour out there on Monday, as well as looked at all of the other projects, and it is beautiful. As you know, we had an ambitious and challenging timeline for this project, and more ambitious of a project than I've ever seen or one that I've ever been a part of. And I'm happy to report that we will be welcoming our teachers, students, and families onto their new campus in just a few short weeks. We're hoping to get a temporary certificate of occupancy this week for some areas of the building. We'll be moving furniture into some spaces next week, and we hope to be able to have our staff in there at the beginning of August. So that's really exciting. The staff toured the construction site on the last day of school, our Carver staff, and I would like to take our board members out there to see the facility and how the finishing pieces are coming along. And so Elizabeth has identified three mornings that we could make that happen for you all: July 5th, July 12th, and July 13th, all at 8:30 a.m. And we would need to keep those groups to three board members or less, and I can go with you on any of those days, but if those days work for you, we'll do first come, first serve until we get to three: July 5th, July 12th, and July 13th at 8:30 a.m. Does that work? Do those days, can everyone make one of those days work? Okay, we'll juggle those and make that happen then. So if you'll let Elizabeth know, and if you don't get your day, maybe you can twist someone's arm and we'll change and figure it out. Anyway, I'm really excited. It's absolutely stunning, and I'm looking forward to our kids being in the building.
That's great.
That's all I have this evening.
Exciting stuff. Elizabeth, I might have to twist your arm, but I definitely will twist your arm to get in there.
Yeah, we can get you in before, yes. I can take you out there tomorrow if I need to.
Excuse me? Bring a taco? Yeah, I'll bring food.
And we're good shoes, closed-toed shoes. It's still an active construction site, and it hasn't been turned over to us completely, so you'll want to have all the PPE on that you're supposed to have on, but we'll take care of you.
Okay, sounds great. Looking forward to it. We will move on to item number six, Information Items Reports. Mr. Grant, do you have any questions on 6A, 6B, 6C, or 6D?
Do not.
Do not. Mr. Davis, do you have any questions on 6A, 6B, 6C, or 6D? No? Okay. Mr. Vidonya, do you have any questions on 6A, 6B, 6C, or 6D?
No.
Mr. Guillory, do you have any questions on 6A, 6B, 6C, or 6D? Okay. Mr. Ochoa, do you have any questions on 6A, 6B, 6C, or 6D?
No.
And Mr. Patton, do you have any questions on 6A, 6B, 6C, or 6D?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
I want to point out something under Information Items and Reports. We put the material packets in for Update 121 First Reading, but we didn't get it on the agenda, and we didn't get the cover memo in there. So if you're okay with it, we'll still have this as a first reading. You have the materials. I can send you the memo tomorrow. We'd like to adopt the policy at the end of July. If you'd rather us wait, we can do that, too, and make next month a first reading if the board has a preference, but I recommend we go ahead and move forward with the first reading. Keep it moving.
Was that just information? Okay, great. I don't have a problem with that. All the information was in there. Let's just have cover letter. Yep, great. Okay, moving forward, moving on to item number seven, Consent Agenda. We have quite a few. Mr. Grant, do you have anything off of Agenda Item Number Seven that you would like pulled from the consent?
No.
Mr. Davis, is there anything from consent that you would like pulled? Mr. Vidonya, is there anything from consent that you would like pulled?
No.
Mr. Guillory, is there anything from consent that you would like pulled?
No.
Okay. Mr. Ochoa, is there anything from consent that you would like pulled?
No.
And Mr. Patton, is there anything from consent that you would like pulled?
No.
Okay. Hearing no items pulled from consent, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to...
Mr. Guillory.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you for the, Mr. Guillory.
Second.
Mr. Vidonya as a second. Okay. Why did I just blank? All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to item eight, Review Discuss at the Sale of Unlimited Tax Building Bonds Series 2023. Ms. Cheryl Davis, welcome.
Yes, we sold the last of our bonds that we had authorized by the voters on November 2nd of 2021. The bond sale occurred on Wednesday, April 19th of 2023, and closed on May 16th. We did receive the full $80 million for project costs in that month, and our financial representative, Robert Dusty Trailer of RBC Capital Marcus, is here to go over the sale with you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Good evening, everyone. I don't know if I need to advance the slides here through, there it is, it's up there. I'm learning. Well, great to be here this evening and delighted to be able to deliver this report to you guys. As Ms. Davis indicated, we were recently in the market to sell the final $80 million of the November 2021 bond election. And the thing about that that is great is you guys have now sold all the bonds, and all $355 million that were approved by the voters has been received by the district to be used for projects here at Waco ISD. And from the looks of what you guys are doing, just the report this evening, you guys are getting ready to move in pretty quickly on Carver. So that's fantastic. But wanted to give the report specifically on the Series 2023 bonds. I think, as you recall, I was here in February to get the board's approval for us to move forward with that sale. Following that meeting, we were very much quickly moving forward with the sale of the bonds and were able to obtain the permanent school fund guarantee so that the bonds were able to be sold with the state's AAA rating backing. However, we also, with Ms. Davis and team here at the district, we were able to have visits with the rating agency. Moody's is who primarily rates Waco Independent School District. Moody's affirmed the district's AA2 bond rating, and I can tell you, just going into the bond election process and things like that, I was very pleased and delighted that Moody's kept the district's bond rating at that very high AA2 level. So combining the high AA2 underlying rating of Waco Independent School District with the state's PSF AAA allows these bonds to get very good reception into the bond market. So we were in the market on April 19th. Have a quick little summary here on page number two. We were in the market on April 19th and went into the market to sell all $80 million of those bonds. The actual par amount of the bonds that were sold was $78,455,000. That's the stated par value of the bonds, but the investors paid a premium for those bonds, thus we were able to deliver the full $80 million to the district's project account. The funds were received by the district on May 16th. That's when they hit your bank account. Those bonds will also, I think, like all of the other series that we've sold here, had a nine-year call feature for the district. Typically, Muni bonds have historically had a 10-year call feature. Leave on all three of these series, we were able to whittle that down by one year. May hopefully down the road give us a little bit of flexibility when it comes to maybe refinancing or things like that down the road. The interest rate on the bonds, the federal arbitrage yield was a 3.99, and the all-in TIC, that's the rate when you factor in issuance cost, when you factor in the price of call feature and things like that, was a 4.11. And the thing that my team and I were looking at here recently was, okay, we sold three different series of bonds for Waco ISD for the November 21 bond election. If we were to look at the weighted average interest rate on all three of those bond issues, what would it be? That was a 3.5% if we were to factor them all in, and that was well below, of course, the estimates that ourselves and your team looked at when we were calculating the impact on this bond. So we're delighted to, even in, you know, the past 18 months, we've been in a rising rate environment, still been able to get these bonds with very favorable overall interest costs for the taxpayers of Waco ISD. Moving on to page number three, you can just see the sources and uses. You see the $78,455 million of principal, the net premium of $2.262 million, and then down below, the uses of funds with the full $80 million being deposited to the district's project account. And then this schedule here just takes into account all of the outstanding debt service payments of the district layering on these bonds, still very much in line with where our estimates were, actually less than what our estimates were when we were looking at the performance on the bonds going into the election. And then here is something that I think is kind of interesting. This is on page number five, you're going to see a screenshot. This comes to us from a service that we utilize whenever we're in, on the day that we're in the market to sell bonds called Ipreo Game Day. And what this does is just gives us a look at the orders that were received for the bonds, and a lot of, so it goes on a maturity-by-maturity basis. You can't see most of those maturities because it's very small, but then if you look out towards the, to the far end, we had very, very nice reception over subscriptions for those bond maturities on the long end of the structure here, and that allowed us to push the underwriters at the end of the order period to reduce the overall interest cost because of strong demand for the bonds. And then on the page that follows is just a little grid that shows us where our Moody's rating hits, the AA2 for the district. You can see you're very, very, very high up there, very near the top AAA rating. So these, again, allow you great access to the market, and some of the positive credit strengths are noticed here, positive financial operations and strong reserves, low fixed costs, and the presence of a major university here in the Waco community that helps to stabilize the tax base and promote growth in the community. That really concludes my formal remarks, other than to thank you guys for the opportunity to represent such a wonderful district on such important projects. It has been our pleasure to be able to work with you guys, and we're excited to see all these projects come to fruition. Your team, I know I probably say this every time I come before you guys, but it is for real, from Dr. Kinkanon, Ms. Davis, and on down, they do a great job of helping us to facilitate bringing these transactions to market. So it is not just us, it is also your team that's deeply involved, and they do a wonderful job representing the school district.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it, and we appreciate the diligence and in so much uncertainty what you and your team have done to for Waco ISD and for our taxpayers. We really appreciate it. We really appreciate it. I will entertain a motion. I don't have the motion before me.
Actually, I think it's just an information item.
Oh, information report, sorry. You're right. Are there any questions? Mr. Grant?
No.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Vidania? Mr. Guillory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
Just have a comment and want to say thanks again for, for your work and.
Sure, thank you.
Hopefully, we can, we can work together on the next one.
Certainly. No questions. All right.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Dusty, for.
Absolutely, hope to see you guys soon and hopefully we get maybe a cool front, maybe sometime. Down into the nineties before long, I don't know.
Whoa, those cool nineties.
Freaking havoc on my bald head, but.
Well, thank you. You too. Okay, we are going on to agenda item number nine, review and discuss Texas Association of School Boards Tasby Pay Maintenance Study. Mrs. Barton? Hi, welcome. I think the last time we saw you was via Zoom.
Actually, I was here in person last year, which is great, but I've been with y'all for so long, so we.
Yes, I, I just remembered the Zoom. I remember thinking, oh, my goodness.
Back in the day of the Zoom, but we're definitely back in person these days and so I'm excited to be here. I love working with y'all since, I think, year five. So, yeah, we've been together for a while. So we are going to talk today about our general process of pay maintenance that we work with the district with every year. We're here for information, to answer questions if you have any and what our proposal is. And then, of course, district admin will fill up, you know, follow up with you on what is going to happen. So if you do have any questions, though, please don't hesitate to stop me because we definitely want to make sure that you feel comfortable with the information. So we are going to go through the pay systems maintenance process. As I said, it is a maintenance process, so we are not doing a full review. This is something that we help maintain every year. We help maintain your compensation system. And with that, we go through this pay study process that we do every single year. And I'm just going to briefly go over the steps so that way everybody's on the same page tonight and then we'll get into the actual district data that we looked at this year. So remember in our process every year that we have, we as Tasby have conversations with district admin about goals for the pay system, goals for the pay review each year and what the district's looking at, challenges that you're having. Everyone is struggling with staffing, with pay, there is no money, all the things. And this year, of course, was a legislative session with not a lot happening, right? And so we know that, but we also want to be prepared just in case something comes up in the later months and things like that. So we're here to support the district through all the processes of that and we had those conversations this year and they continue to be ongoing. We also gathered data from the district, looked at all of the regular pay data processes. Then what we do at Tasby is we go into the analysis mode. And so we look at the data, we compare the market, we look at those market districts, what's happening not only with our teacher pay, obviously, but with administrators and professionals and then our hourly groups. We match those common jobs and we look at your structures. We do adjustments where appropriate and we look at individual pay, making sure that adjustments are there as needed. Pretty much very similar to what we do every year because it helps maintain your system where it needs to be. And then we give those recommendations based on what district admin requests. Same process pretty much every year. Just a reminder, the reason that we have a pay system and that we look at this process every year is because we want pay in schools to be competitive for our employees, not only to recruit employees in, but obviously to retain them. And that is becoming even more important in these days of, you know, districts struggling with staffing, struggling with money, that intersection. And just really, our market's kind of really volatile right now in, in school districts. And so we're competing not only with other school districts and especially in the Waco area, you have a lot of districts to compete with, but you're also competing with private sector and just, you know, everything that's happened since the pandemic and the great resignation and all of those things. So it's even more dire to make sure that we are doing what we need to do as much as we can within our budgeted means and funds in a school district. We also want to make sure that our employees are paid for their job value, but that we are controlling costs. And obviously, that's the onus of the board, but also district admin and that we're doing that within our budget, but knowing that our budget is limited and so we want to maximize what we can do for our employees with our pay system. And so remember, when we're thinking about pay system control, that we want to make sure, and this is a lot of what we do for you, but we assess the jobs accurately, that we are looking at the values, that we understand the value of those jobs, not only in a school district, but how they compare outside of the school district when we have those jobs that we compare that way. We also want to make sure that our pay ranges are competitive and that's why we look at your structures every year to make adjustments to ensure that your pay ranges are competitive, your market values are aligned and that we can continue to move employees towards that midpoint as fast as possible, but keeping within budgeted means. We also want to make sure that we are controlling the pay spread between our job incumbents. And so what we'd like to see ideally is that we see a nice spread across our pay range, that we have those that have fewer years of experience towards the bottom and those with more at the top, right? And, and that's what we, our goal is every year. And so the way that we do that is not only through adjusting structures, but also looking at individual employee pay. So we do both. We also, you know, accelerate those employees to market pay by different strategies that we talk about in, in the report and with district admin. And then, of course, we help provide recommendations for budget increases that, again, that we can hopefully maximize our money that we can put to that for our employees. And then just remember that we are looking at a market-based system. You implement a market-based system and that's what we recommend in school districts. And essentially what that means is that we are aligning the family of jobs around that mar, uh, market value or that midpoint. And so if you look at the target, that's the hundred percent of market. But remember, we're going to spread across the pay range, so you will have employees above and below depending on lots of different factors. Could be experience, it could be that we're looking for a certain job profile. Maybe the job matches to that, the jobs that we're looking at are maybe not entirely. And then remember too, that sometimes we do pay for premium talent to bring it in and to keep those individuals in our district, right? We want to be a high-performing district, so we're looking to, that sometimes maybe pay is going to be more than just that market value in order to retain and to recruit. But with that being said, we always want to make sure that we are mindful of the costs because those are ongoing when we're talking about base salaries. Any questions about compensation before I jump in? I'm a fast talker, we're going to get this done fast. Okay, all right, yes.
Mr. Penn?
Looking back at your last slide, I see the target's one hundred. So are we, are you, the one eighteen and the eighty-two, is that our spread?
That's not your, that's just like the general range. So that's a general market range, what we would see for a market-based system. And so what we typically say is that within ten percent above or below that one hundred is, it could be a competitive range for jobs. But you might see jobs that are as high as one eighteen, one thirty, you might even see them lower. We wouldn't want to see them much lower than twenty percent lower than market, but there's always reasons. What we would say is, when you're thinking about teachers, for example, a hundred percent is where our target is for sure. And if we're much lower than that, then we're probably going to be in crisis mode, right? We don't want to be much lower. Maybe for your campus administrators is the same. But maybe there are some other jobs to where we would recruit someone in that has fewer years of experience and maybe it's not comparing exactly to a school district, maybe we compare it to also private sector. And so we look at the market value there and we might say, okay, we're okay with that job being about ninety-two percent right now because we know over time that that person is going to gain more experience, gain more talent, and we'll pay them more over time. So it really is a range and I think the important part to say is that it is a range. And so we will pay employees within that range, but it provides the district flexibility to do what they need to do to be able to recruit, retain and to, to do the strategies they need for jobs. I hope that helped.
Yeah, and I've always heard, you know, you want to be at ninety percent of market with your positions. You really don't want to fall below that. There may be some reasons that you do, but the goal is really a ninety and above. And you may not typically hit a hundred percent on, you're just not on all positions. But if you can get ninety, that's good.
Yeah, and there are some jobs where we wouldn't want to be below ninety-five percent, right? There's just those special jobs that are there too. But a lot of that is based on not only market necessarily, but it might be how you as a district and you as administration value those jobs. That's great questions. Okay. All right, so looking again, these are the market districts. So this year, we had about twenty data points where you see the asterisks. We do have some footnotes in there that just kind of help you know that we do. So this, the majority of our data is taken from the Tasby Salary Survey. That is something that districts complete every year. Remember that Tasby works with districts across the state. So we pull that survey data and that's where we get a lot of the data that we work on in our compensation systems. Not all of it, but a lot of it. And so we look at your market and what your market is really your geographic area and those market that are those districts that you are competing with. Some of them may not be directly in your geographic area, but it may be districts of similar size that you're wanting to compare to because you have similar programs, you have similar initiatives. While, you know, sometimes we do that, sometimes we don't, that's usually a very strategic way that we look at certain districts and that happens through conversations with district admin. But overall, this is the market districts. As I said, you know, there were a few districts in there that did not participate in the salary survey. However, we still were able to get their teacher salaries off of the website or through the district. Other market sources that we use, because we don't only look at local market when we're looking at jobs in a school district because we do have other jobs that we compare to in private sector. So Tasby HR Services pays for two third-party vendors to provide us that market data. That is Economic Research Institute and Comp Analysts. This is the same that we've had every year. We pull in those values of non-school market and then for many jobs, we combine local and non-school because we know that we have those jobs in both places. Our first group that we'll look at tonight is our teachers, just as normal. And so we provide you a little bit of demographic data for your teachers just so you can kind of see a snapshot of where the experience breakout is for your current teachers and then the teachers that you're hiring into your district. This is just for information purposes. District admin uses this for their own goals, but this is data that we are able to survey for and we provide. And so you can see, remember, it is a snapshot of time when we collect your data. You can see how many teachers you had at that time in the district and where the distribution is of your years of experience. And what you can see is that while you do hire in, you know, teachers with zero years of experience, you have a large portion that are coming in that are the one to five, bless you, the six to ten and the eleven to fifteen. And so what that tells us is that you are able to pull in teachers that have some training and they are able to bring some skills to the classroom, which is good. And then looking at your newly hired teachers, you can see here, these are the districts that you recruited in last year or the teachers you recruited into the district last year. Again, it's a snapshot of those teachers. You can see that you had a large portion with zero years of experience. That is to be expected, just because you are a larger district in the area. You also have a college and you're close to college town, uh, college, towns with colleges. So those are all things to be expected. But you are also able to recruit in teachers that have additional years of experience, which is positive also. So looking at your teacher pay, remember, we survey for zero, five, ten, fifteen and twenty years. Those are the years that we survey at. And you can see where Waco ISD compares to the market median. And here you can see that you are below the market median at all surveyed years. And so we do address that in the proposal that we provide for district admin and the board to consider. But what we do like to see here is that you don't have any major dips or gaps where you do have more, the slope is aligned with the median. And so, you know, we just want to continue to move that median toward, or your district pay for teachers to the market median. And so in values, this is what we see here. So you can say, so for all surveyed years, you're anywhere between two and three percent below market and you can see the dollar differences of where that is. And again, part of the reason why you have dipped a little bit below market is because the market's been extremely volatile. In the last few years, except last year, we've seen about a two percent shift. This last year, it was three percent, which was really unprecedented. We haven't seen a three percent shift. And of course, for hourly jobs, we saw an even greater shift for them. So this is something just you have to consider. What we can see, if you read the news and you're looking at districts that are passing budget right now, that it's very likely that that market will be about the same this year, that we're looking at probably for sure two, if not three percent. Unfortunately, at this time, we don't know what the legislature's going to do, if they're going to do anything. But we still have to anticipate that there is something that may happen. So we just want to take that into consideration too. And so when we're thinking about pay raises, especially for teachers, we want to be able to do things that we can afford, but we also want to maximize what we can afford.
Can I ask a question in this?
Sure.
Does this include signing bonuses or retention bonuses?
So we'll talk about that in just a second.
Sorry.
This is base salary.
Okay.
And everything we'll provide tonight is base salary. So, you know, we don't really touch on like the benefits, the perks and all of those things that will help give the total reward package. But we do talk about the teaching area stipends that you're talking about, and this is a handful of them. We do not usually present the incentives, but district does have that information. So these are the, some of the critical need areas that we benchmark for and what the district is paying compared to the market median. And then the district's reporting that stipend, which basically means they're paying that stipend to those teachers. And so you can see where you compare to the market median. And what we say too is, you know, you have to think about your base pay in relation to the stipends that you pay. And so if your base pay's strong, you may not pay quite as much as the market medium in a stipend. It really depends on your recruitment and your retention efforts for these critical need areas. I will say though, what we are seeing where we always talk about bilingual, we're talking more and more about our special education stipends and especially for the more challenging positions of self-contained, which is really, you know, could be behavior. It could be your more life skills, autism, all the way across the spectrum. But we are seeing that more and more districts are increasing those stipends and that has been a recommendation this year, at least for my districts, and I know my colleagues have said the same. So just knowing, you know, it trends, right, over years, where we always say pay for bilingual. Well, now we're saying, you're probably going to have to do that for special education because we can't find those teachers and keep them. So now we're going to look at your non-teaching groups. So we're going to move into your exempt positions, which are our professional administrators, as well as your hourly. And so we have this, all the comparisons here on one slide for you. And so we break each exempt and non-exempt into three comparison groups for market. So when we're thinking about central administration, we're thinking about directors and above. And we use, you know, statewide data there, so we have more data points because we typically look across the state when we're thinking about the single incumbent positions like directors and above. And two, because we have such variance in your market, we want to make sure that we are looking at the right market values for those type of jobs. And so you can see for employee pay to market, that you're about two percent above market. Your pay grade midpoints, remember, we're talking about the market value in that hundred percent or at a hundred percent of market. And then we compared about twenty-five jobs here. And remember, we don't compare every single job in a school district, it's benchmark jobs. Campus administration, we are looking at principals and APs only, principals, assistant principals only. And so they're at a hundred percent of market for employee pay to market and their pay grade midpoints are about three percent above. Professionals will be pretty much everyone else. So you'll have your business jobs, your technology, any special education-related services, your instructional coaches, counselors, school counselors, social workers, anything that you can think of that would be professional or, you know, related to administration. And so that's not a director above or a principal or an AP. So overall, they're about one percent below market, but pay grade midpoints are about two percent. And your midpoints are staying competitive or within that competitive range because we are adjusting them every year. That is part of the process and what we're looking at, which is a good thing. You want that to stay strong, not only for pay increases, but that helps strengthen an individual employee pay over time. So for your hourly groups, again, broken into three subgroups, clerical, technical are going to be any hourly tech, technology jobs, as well as like your administrative assistants, any clerks, things like that, you know, P E Ms. And so they're about six percent below market on, for the group. And then their pay grade midpoints are about one percent below. The other thing that we look at with your starting rates with hourly is how competitive they are. And those are about ten percent below market. Because remember, when we're thinking about starting rates for hourly, we're thinking about the pay floor as well as, you know, trying to attract people to start with your district. But you have to remember too, where these numbers might look, might look low, our hourly market shifted very dramatically last year because we've just seen all the districts raise the pay floor and they continue to do so. Instructional support is your strongest group here. They're about seven percent above market. Remember, this is your aides, any LVNs, anything, any hourly positions that are forward-facing with students and supporting campuses. And the pay grade midpoints are about eight percent above market. And then your starting pay is about one percent below. Then auxiliary will be your operation side of the house, as well as police. And this was a hundred percent of market. And then your pay grade midpoints, they're about five percent above and then three percent below for starting. Questions on your market comparisons here? And we can always go back. So our recommendations, and again, these are high-level recommendations, but first we would say, we propose that you implement the pay structure, align, adjustments to align with markets. Remember, I said that I adjusted structures. Remember, I said that I adjusted structures for you all. I do that every year so that way your pay grade midpoints can remain strong. We also worked on improved your starting salaries, not only for professional and administrators, as well as teachers, but also for your hourly. We also aligned your midpoints with market. And then we looked at your jobs within your structures to ensure that they are still within the hierarchy that we want and that the district has those jobs where they need to be. And there were just a few slight changes just for pay purposes. Recommendation number two is going to be the general pay increase. So the general pay increase is going to be what every employee receives. And so we did create three models. We proposed a 1%, 2%, and 3%, and that's what we normally do. For the teacher structure, we calculate the percentage for that, your teachers off of the market median salary. And this year it was 58, 149. And that methodology is comparable to what we do for your other pay groups where we calculate the GPI off of the percentage of the employee's pay grade midpoint. So it is the same methodology. But every continuing employee would receive whatever percentage the board approves. For teachers, our recommendation for your different models, so the 1%, you can see the green dotted line doesn't get you very far. It gives about a little bit of money towards your teachers, but it's not going to raise your pay that far. Then 2% obviously is going about, you know, move closer to the market median. And then we have the 3% that will align you close to the market median there.
Ma'am, may I ask a question, please? Oh, just going back to what you had said. For the teacher structure, the GPI is a couple of previous, I'm sorry. Is calculated as a percent of the market median? That's a market of the schools that you've shown us? Okay.
Median of the market that is shown, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so the percentage, 1%, 2%, or 3% would be calculated off of that number.
Those are jobs outside of education too, that are comparable?
In your market. So we, for teachers, we would just use local market, right? Because we're comparing teachers to teachers. But for your non-teachers, yes, we, some jobs we compare to non-school where it's appropriate. Right. So those are the three models for teaching. And then for recommendation number three, not only are we looking at giving everyone a general pay increase, right? We want to also make sure that we are looking at individual employee pay. And so we do a few things to adjust employee pay. Remember, I said that we adjust structures. So once we adjust those structures, after we apply the general pay increase, if there is any employee that is still below the minimum of that new structure, we will provide another percent to move them into the range. That way, they are not going to be leapfrogged by anyone that would be newly hired to the district. And we want to make sure that they are within that range there. We also look at the educator career pathway with our administrators and our educators that are in the professional group. So that could be, you know, your instructional coaches. It would be counselors, assistant principals, principals, and so on. And we provide teacher pay equity adjustments. And essentially what that means is we are going to compare those jobs and we're going to look at those compared to what the teacher pay will be. And we're going to ensure that they are going to be making at least what they would be making in the classroom, if not a little bit more. It incentivizes those, you know, leadership positions and those positions that they'd come out of the classroom to take. Then we also look at strategic adjustments for your administrative professionals. So once the general pay increase is applied, we've applied any other adjustments, the adjustment to minimum or the teacher pay equity adjustments. We then do a comparison of where their salary compares to market. And so if they're below that 90%, then we look to give them additional 1% to help move them a little bit more. It will not necessarily get them to 90% or even close to market, but it's going to move them closer to that value and gives them a little bit of a boost so they can move a little bit faster towards market value. And then for your hourly groups, we did apply placement scale adjustments for hourly employees. We did some work on raising starting rates, but it's kind of a give and take. When you raise starting rates for hourly, then you start to compress everyone, right? And so we want to ensure that we are aligning hourly positions by experience and that we are providing some space in there. And we're also making sure that we're looking at subordinate and supervisor relationships and we're not compressing those either. And then recommendation four, we are recommending that you increase your bilingual stipend by $1,000. So for those individuals that are designated for that assignment from $6,000 to $7,000, as we say, you can go where the money is if you're a bilingual teacher and you can find one, right? So you want to be able to find them by increasing your value. And then continue reviewing the district comp plan and update as needed to maintain market competitiveness, whether that's with Tasby or doing that internally. You should do that process every single year in alignment with the budget process. And then we provided three cost models for you. We give you the broad overview in the presentation. And so you can see, again, general pay increase is going to be every employee and what they're going to receive. The adjustments will go to individual employees. And so district admin would have those individual adjustments and what that looks like. We provide cost assessments based on the data. And then you can see what the estimated total increase would be. Obviously, this is a little bit fluid. It is based on a snapshot in time and a lot of things go into this, but it gives you a general idea of what you would be spending for that increase. So for the 1%, you would be spending about 1.87 million. For the 2%, it's about 2.88 million. And then for the 3%, you're at about 3.9 million. That's a pennies. That's pretty much it. Like I said, I'm a fast talker, so please, we can go back or ask me questions or let me clarify if need be.
Mr. Grant, do you have any further discussion?
I just have one question. So these numbers do not include the TIA adjustments or signing bonuses or retention bonuses, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a model of that to know what that does to our numbers?
It would probably be in your budget, I would think, a little bit.
Well, most of the, well, TIA is, is separate that we could pull and show you, but that's not every teacher, right? We have about 100 teachers. And then we've done retention bonuses at different levels based on what your teachers were hired and then as well as for other positions. And then we've done some for teachers coming back in August. So we could put all of those together on one page for the board so you can remember. We've asked multiple times for those using our ESER funds. So we could compile that into one chart so that you could have that and see what we've given in total. I mean, so the top would be your $10,000 retention bonuses would have been the first one that we gave for teachers and that would have been the highest paid out in three years. And then your TIA teachers are all different based on which level they got. So some of them are getting upwards of $20,000 and others are getting $1,000 or $5,000. So that's a little bit harder to follow. But the retention bonuses, we could map that out.
My question, I guess, is if, if our retention bonuses and other stipends are on par with all the other districts, then it's a wash, really. If our retention bonus isn't, is abnormal, is greater than other districts, then that would pull our average medians up. I'm assuming that everybody is writing retention bonus checks and everything they can do. But it just seems like we have done that a lot lately, which I'm grateful for and will support again. I just wonder if that skews these numbers at all.
So I would say a couple of things about that. First of all, I think we've been very generous. The board has been really kind and supportive of those recommendations for those retention bonuses. And those have come from ESER funds and Waco ISD received a really large amount of ESER funds that some of other districts may not have received. So I would say we'd probably be on the high end of giving those kinds of bonuses. And then my second thought would be that you want, that those, those ESER bonuses, and I don't even think stipends count in TRS, in the teacher retirement system.
Depends on how they're paid, but yes.
It depends on how they're paid. So you want to be careful to stay with that base pay that's in the base salary because it impacts your employees' teacher retirement.
Yes.
Retirement system.
Aren't ESER funds to be up and done by 2024, 2025?
End of September '24.
So the money that we were doing for that, we're not going to have.
Correct.
So that makes, looking at this, that all that much more important.
Right. So you won't have it on, you won't have it ongoing. So if you get behind the market on your base pay, then you, you're not going to have those funds to offset that difference in the future.
Exactly.
You know, I would say you want to stay, those were nice to have and we needed, we needed them. Our teachers needed them with inflation and impact of COVID. But staying close to these market values is really important for just future planning. And, and, you know, you saw on the, we didn't talk about it a lot, but we have a lot of new teachers. And I think we heard at the conference last week, about 50% of teachers in the state are brand-new teachers now. We're approaching, or just over 50% across the state. So we need to stay as competitive as we can. But I don't think we want to lose sight that the board has really been generous and we've used our ESER funds to support what's important to us and, and our employees have benefited from that.
I just wanted to make it clear that those ESER funds, we're hitting the bottom of the well.
Correct.
So I think it's really important that we look at the market target.
Which is why we do this study every year.
Yeah, and I mean, to your point, I, I think all districts are concerned about that, right? The ones that used ESER for retention, which not everybody did, right? I mean, it depended, everybody had flexibility. So it's hard to quantify that when it comes to our study and that's why we do base salaries. Every district's very different in their stipends and what they pay.
So could you, I'm sorry to ask a question with, but my question for you, Jennifer, is what, what are you seeing, thinking about the special session and salary increases? Are you seeing one-time payments of districts waiting for special sessions? Are people just moving on with their decisions on their, their compensation plans? And then whatever happens with the legislature happens?
That's a great question and that is about a question that I get at every meeting.
Yes.
And probably every day right now. So our best guidance is districts need to move forward and they need to do what they can afford or feel like you can afford at this time. We would say probably be a little more conservative than not because it's still very uncertain. With that said, the original bill language, which has all died, right? But the original bill language, and this has been a concern with districts and superintendents and boards, is that if a district passed something now, they would have to put something on top. And that was not in any of the bill language. Essentially, what it would be, would be if for some reason you didn't meet the threshold, you could probably have the flexibility to do some type of settle-up the next year. So we try to tamp that concern as much as possible. I think there was just some thought process that with House Bill 3, that's what happened, but not really. What districts had to do is they had to meet their threshold of compliance. And so it felt like it was on top, right? And so we would just say that, you know, as much as you can within budgeted means, but that you need to go ahead and probably do what you can do. I don't think it's prudent to wait when you're trying to hire and staff your campuses and your positions throughout the, the district.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, do you have any questions for discussion?
No questions. So thank you for your work. I think as far as just information for the board, I would want to know how much of our retention is affected by this? How many, our teachers that are leaving the district? Is it because of finances? Is it because of the pay? Just how much is this affecting us? I would want to know that.
Mr. Vedanya, do you have any? No discussion? Mr. Gilery, do you have any discussion?
No.
Okay. Mr. Ochoa, do you have any? Mr. Patton, do you have? Took your turn, okay. Well, thank you so much, Ms. Martin. I know that this is a, yeah, the, the market is volatile and so, and it's crazy. And yeah, inflation and, yeah. So we just really appreciate all of your, your work on this and presenting every year to us. We definitely want to get, make sure that our employees are paid early.
Thank you for having me here. I'm always very grateful to support the district. You're one of my favorites. I hope you all have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to item 10, review and discuss budget update. Cheryl Davis? Oh, she comes from behind the podium. I didn't see you. And I've been calling you Cheryl Davis because you told me not to call you Ms. Davis anymore. Yes, okay.
So we're going to talk briefly about kind of where we are in the budget. As you all probably know, there was very little legislation that happened. So we're kind of still a little bit in waiting. But we're going to look again at just an update with our enrollment and average daily attendance. We have, in the packet, we'll have some numbers through the 66 weeks. And we'll look at where it looks like we're going to end the general fund for this current year. Then we will look at what school finance legislation did pass. I do have allergies, so I'm having problems with that. So the 2023 local property values, what they look like, and then some early projections for the general fund and the base budget with some of the additional costs we know right now and the ending position. So this is what the enrollment is looking like right now for 2022, 2023. Our fall P E Ms was 13, 823, which was down about 260 kids from the year before. It looks like right now our final ADA will be 11, 871. However, you have some waivers that are in your packet tonight to approve for a couple of days. And this does not include those waivers. So that will change slightly once we, if we, if you all approve the waivers and TEA approves the waivers. So our final ADA as a percent of fall P E Ms is 85.9%. You can see the history of the S A P A as far as a percent of fall P E Ms. This is much lower than it's been historically. Last few years have been low, 21, 22 was very low, came up a little bit. Last, this year, I am, in my projection, raising it a little bit more. But I did lower my enrollment estimate just a bit. So looking at 2023, 2024, what I'm projecting, our demographer and my projections, I use in my pupil projection template, were coming out fairly flat. But I just don't think that that's what's going to happen. I, I've been optimistic the last couple of years and we still keep having losses. So I took it down about 125 students. I think that's going to be, that might still be a little high, but it's a little less optimistic than what I have been. And so with that, I did take the ADA up, ADA up to 86.3% above the 85.9, not much, but just a little bit. Still not in the 90% range that we used to be at. Anyway, so that would give us an ADA of about 11, 816, which is what I'm currently using to project the general fund revenues for next year. Looking at this current year, picture looks a little bit better than what I was thinking at one time. But right now, it looks like our revenues will end up being about $150 million. We started out with a beginning fund balance of $55 million. 150 million in revenues. Our expenditures will be about $152.7 million. As we have talked about, with that loss in ADA for the current year, that losing that 260 kids and having the lower attendance rate, you know, our revenues ended up quite a bit lower than what we had originally expected. We also had a little bit of a loss in revenue in the money we got from the county because we thought that was going to be about a million dollars this year because we thought they were doing equal payments every year. And it turns out that's not quite what we're going to get. So we're going to get about three, we got about $300,000. That's what we're expecting next year too. Expenditures, 152.7. There was a lot of under expenditure this year, but we did have some of the food service projects and a few things to finish up in the current year. As a result, our expenditures look like they're going to exceed our revenues by about 2.7 million. Then we have other resources and uses. This is money that we transfer to Guam, Guaca, and our day school for the deaf because their tuition amounts don't really cover their expenses. And so we have this transfer every year. This is what I'm estimating it's going to be at the end of this year is $426,000. That'll give us expenditures and uses over revenues and resources of about 3.1 million. And still give us a healthy any fund balance of about $52.2 million. Again, we've had a healthy fund balance. I'm not real concerned with that level. Continued hits on it. Continued hits on it could be a different story. But it does include $485,000, as I talked about, in that walk-in cooler freezer project that we finished up this year, and about $1,007,000 in HVAC work that was left from the hail damage claim. Now, one of the things I do not have in this number, in the revenue number, is we, TASB, we're trying to get our final data to invoices and all to TASB for the final payment on that hail damage claim. We might have a little bit more revenue coming from them, but we're not quite sure on that at this point. So again, this is our fund balance right now as a, the projected amount as a percent of the budget is about 27%. Our fund, our board policy requires us to keep an unassigned fund balance of about 20%. So as you can see, we're still in good shape. If we go below 20%, we have to come up with a plan to fix it. So legislation, what's real, but what, what really happened? Not much. So one of the things that did not happen in this legislative session, probably the, the one thing that we're gaining money from right now is something that happened with House Bill 3. Part of House Bill 3 that was passed in 2019 for this coming biennium had escalation clause, an inflation clause, for our golden penny allotment. And so as you can see, under the current law, we were getting 96.56 cents, 98.56 cents ever since 2019. But for this coming year, that's going to go up to 12621, and in the following year to 12952. So this is those pennies that we went out on that T R E. Had we not done that T R E, we wouldn't have these pennies. But these are those pennies when we went out on that T R E. There, we have eight golden pennies that we are allowed, that we get at a higher rate. So this is where we're going to generate some extra money for this coming year. It's going to generate about $4 million for us, which is going to help cover that deficit we were just talking about.
It, it goes up from 98 to 126. Is that per student, or what is?
Per student, yes.
Okay.
So, per ADA. So, and then we'll get an additional half million in 2025. On our school safety allotment, that was a bill that did pass this legislative session. You know, sort of a good and bad news thing. We are, we were getting $9.72 per ADA in the safety allotment. We're now getting $10. So that went up 28 cents per ADA, which will generate $2,777 for us. But then they also are giving us $15,000 per campus for safety and security. But part of that requirement is we're going to have to have an armed officer at every campus. So what we're looking at right now, that would generate about $375,000, maybe depending on what they define as a campus. We're not quite sure about Guam and Guaca, whether they will be defined as campuses. In looking at the template, it says if the, so it says if it's a district under the, if it's a campus under the district's control. So then my bigger concern becomes the transformation zone campuses. So I don't know exactly how that's going to calculate right now, but $375,000 in new revenue there. But we think putting the armed officer at each campus will cost us about $260,000 more than we're getting. So that's something that we'll have to.
And that's, that's with cutting a couple of positions that we talked about. It's actually about $400,000 more than what we would generate from the new monies.
Yes. And so then also the instructional materials allotment. We are getting an additional 40,000 per student. That is a little deceptive, too, because they actually cut it this past year. So we had much less money in our instructional materials allotment. We did have to cover some purchases with our general fund that we normally wouldn't. So this is sort of, in some ways, just taking it back to what it originally was. So the other thing that they did do that is good news for us, since we're opening new campuses, is the new instructional facilities allotment. You could, had been cut to, I think it was, it had been cut down to 70 million. It had been 100 million before and cut down to 70 million. They did restore that fund back to the $100 million level. We did submit an application for Carver that will be opening. You do it that summer before a new school opens. I was the first application in. I've been the guinea pig, because there, it's not working at TEA. And so they keep kicking it back to me and making me resubmit. But we'll get $1,000 per ADA for that first year for whatever the ADA is at Carver. If the ADA were to increase in the second year, the additional kids would get another $1,000 per student. But only if it increases. Then the other funding legislation, there is some, up to $20 per enrollment for open education resource materials. There's $1,500 per activity in which we let a non-enrolled student, a student that's not enrolled in the district, if they participate in our district U I L, then we would get 1,500 per student for that. Then this, these are some of the things that they did to help school districts. That's part of what you'll hear, they funded. 588.5 million went to TRS for TRS active care. So if your district is not participating in TRS active care, which most of the big districts are not, you don't benefit from this. This is just the districts that participate in active care. And then one-time payments in most categories of TRS retirees. And there is going to be a COLA for those who retired prior to 2020. But again, doesn't come to the school district, those are retirees.
I have no question, I'm sorry. We're getting the $1,000 per ADA for Carver.
Yes.
So that money, will that go to the district, will that go to the campus for them, their campus budget?
No, it basically, it, we'll get it as a district. And then part of what we will assume is, because we've had expenditures this summer, there's not, not everything can be bought from bond funds. So you can buy capital equipment, you can buy furniture, you can buy anything that lasts more than three, four years. You can't buy like new uniforms, you can't buy supply items. So we've had some large costs for those types of items out of non-bond funds this summer. That was one of the things this can help us replace, and anything that we might, because we started out, we just bought some of the uniforms and stuff for the fall sports. We haven't bought necessarily the spring sports. So we'll use some of this money when it comes in to do spring sports and things like that. Yes.
That's the purpose of it, is to offset new startup costs of a new school. So we, Gloria had several teams working, technology, CNI, athletics, and identified everything we needed to order for the new school. So we've had some large expenses, and you've seen those coming through the, over $50,000 expenses just to get materials ordered. And so we'll be distributing those materials out to campuses, and $800,000 won't cover what we've purchased to take care of Carver.
Yes. Unfortunately, they give it to you after the fact, but yeah.
It's good money. It's good money. We'll take it. And we'll get it, we hope to get it for all the other new schools as well.
So what didn't happen, was still up in the air. First of all, tax rate relief. That's, the governor has called, has called a second special session. It's in session right now, or I guess, I guess they haven't adjourned. I'm not quite sure where they are right now. There is a bill from both the House and the Senate. One of the things we were talking about with the salaries earlier, the Senate bill does include some language that was in some of the previous legislation that would give districts that have over 20,000 students, teachers, a $2,000 salary increase. And T, and I think, but it was a one-time, I believe, in that original law. And districts that are under, under $20,000 would get $6,000 per teacher to give their teachers. So whether that passes or not, in the first special session, the, the rest of the bills are very similar to what they were in the first, the House bill and the rest of the Senate bill. In the first special session, the governor seemed to like the House version better than the Senate version in that first session. So not sure what's going to happen there. But until they can come to an agreement on a property tax rate relief, they're not going to, he has said, nothing else happens until we come to agreement on this. So this is what's up in the air right now. Then any other school funding, there is money, there is actually money in the budget, in the state budget, more money for school. A lot of it is going towards tax relief, but there is some more even than that that was supposed to go to school funding. Again, we had no increase in the basic allotment. It's been flat for four years. And the, if we adjust the basic allotment, if we look at inflation from the basic allotment in 2019, that's a 14 and a half percent increase. That would mean they need to increase it $900 per ADA. And that would generate $16 million for us. We know that's not going to happen. But, you know, we, we would be happy with any kind of increase in the basic allotment, because it affects all of the allotments that we get. But he's, the governor's also made that clear, that any increase for school districts is dependent on the, on vouchers. So I'm not real, we're building this budget. We're expecting no new revenue at this point. So let's look at those property values and what happened with them. And we know we had a huge increase last year of almost 17%. This year, our preliminary values are a 12.44% increase over last year. Again, still significantly higher than we had had in previous years. They came in at 10, just right at $11 billion. The, looking at what has happened between the preliminary values and the certified values, the compt, Chief Appraiser is estimating that our historical decrease has been about 8.8%. I'm not quite sure I agree with that, but that's what he's using right now. So he is projecting a certified value of $9.9 billion, which would be a value adjustment of just under $1 billion. That's what we're going, right now, I'm using to calculate our state revenue, because that property value, as we've talked about, is a component of calculating state revenue. The richer you are, the less state funding you get, the bigger your local share of the bill is. So looking a little bit at these, this is something we have to talk about. This is in School First, that we have to have this discussion with you, that it requires us within 120 days of adopting the budget to talk to you about what those preliminary values are. And then we talk about that they are used to calculate the state foundation school program revenue, and they are now current year values. Years ago, we would have a one-year lag in what we were using to calculate our state funding. Made it easier, because then we knew what they were. But right now, right now, I don't know what my final comptroller values are for la, for the current years. So we won't know that until January for the current year. And it'll be a year from, I mean, till July for the current year. It'll be a year from July before I know the final values that we're building this budget on. So I liked the one-year lag myself, but we're now on, on current year values. So the differences between what our local values are and what the state, the comptroller's values are, really have to do with local exemptions and deductions. Most of those are things such as the free port exemption, lease vehicles, pollution control, and solar energy deductions. But those, they do adjustments to our values based on some of those things. So our estimated 2023 T2 value for the state funding purposes is about 9.7. On that previous schedule we showed, we thought it was going to be about 9.9. So this is about 200 million less than what our local values actually are. So what does this do to the tax rate? Again, we're still under this same tax rate compression that we have been ever since House Bill 3 was implemented in 2019. The maintenance and operation tax rate, it only affects maintenance and operation, does not affect the INS tax rate. The first year, our cop, our additional tax, our golden pennies, we have copper pennies, too. So when we did that tax ratification election, we actually did 13 cents. So we got eight cents. At that time, it was six cents in gold pennies and seven cents in, in copper pennies. Those copper pennies have been compressed, and they gave us a couple of extra golden pennies. So right now, we're eight cents of golden pennies and 5.8 cents of copper pennies. Those were only compressed that first time. They have not compressed those again, but they will compress the entire rate for the maintenance and operations. So by, by law, the tax rate is set at .7155 for this coming, the maximum rate for this coming year. It was 80.46 cents this, in the current year. So we are going to be going down about 6.5 cents from what it was in the current year just by the tax rate compression. And over here, if you look, there's the calculation that, and you can see that 80 cents and the 73.34 cents and the compression percentage. So with that and the limitation that we have, the district will get the lesser of the state or local limited under law. So we will be at the 73.34 cents base rate, add the eight cents of golden penny, 5.83 cents, our M and O rate will be 87 cents for, 87.17 cents for this coming year. Again, this is still preliminary, because we don't have our certified values, and states might, might change the compression just a bit. Our INS tax rate that's required to pay debt service will be 27.1738 cents for a total voter-approved tax rate of $1,1434. Now that, looking, this next one, it kind of shows you what that looks like between the two years. That is a reduction of 7.1 cents overall in our M and O rate. It's a reduction of 2.7 cents in our interest and sinking rate. So the total tax rate will be down almost 10 cents. Again, the state should be, will make up that difference when our local revenues go down. Our state revenue should go, will go up to make up this difference. Overall, we basically will get the same amount of money that we're generating by that ADA. It's just from two different sources of funds. And I made a note down there that during the bond election, Dusty kind of referred to it earlier, but we had thought for this year that the estimate, that the tax rate we would need for INS was about 33.7 cents. But with this increase in the values, that has gone down, or it's only 27 cents. It was about six cents less than what we had promoted during the bond election.
That's good interest rates on the bonds, as well as property values increases. It's good news.
So this is what the preliminary general fund looks like for this coming year. Don't have all of the other pockets of revenue in here just yet. We, as I mentioned earlier, I do know that that million dollars that we had used this year from the county is going to be more like 300,000 or 400,000. But right now, I'm still thinking our investment income will offset that, because that's been quite a bit higher this year. So I, I didn't really include that impact. Most of everything else that we have in our revenue stays pretty consistent through, between the years. So I think our increase in revenue overall with, between property taxes and our foundation school program will be somewhere around $5.7 million. Remember, we're starting with a $3 million deficit. Okay. Start out with $3 million deficit in the current year. We have an increase in special education maintenance of effort that we must do because of, we're getting, we're getting extra funding. And we have an increase in identified students. That's going to be about $850,000 that we have to put in. We have, we talked about the safety allotment. There's about at least 270. And that's cutting a few positions. We still would need to put 270,000. 270, and that's cutting a few positions. We still would need to put 270,000 in to comply with that new law. We have utility increases of about half a million. About 300,000 of that is our normal utility increase. But we also have an assessment of about 100,000 to fix the grid. So would they tell you that they fixed the grid? We're helping to fix the grid. The TRS rates went up. That's actually been in law since 2019. They had incremental increases for TRS to help make that fund whole. And this continues this coming year. That's going to cost us about 343,000. Our substitute, we just blew by substitutes last year, so I have to put another 250,000 in there. And then we have other unavoidable rate increases, the tax office and, you know, contracts, different contracts. Right, when I put this together, it was about $340,000. Yesterday, Tammy Boyett and Risk Management brought me the increases for our property insurance, workers' comp, and all of those. So those were 400,000. Our property insurance quote is up $400,000 from last year. So we're looking at what we're going to do. But we've had some very, very large claims. We had the fire, we had the hail damage, we had the winter storm damage. And so that has finally caught up with us. And that's $400,000 on top of what I'm showing here. We talked about the cost of salary increases. Not all of the increase that she was showing goes to the general fund. Some of it, a small portion will go to other funds. So when you look at that 1%, that 1.8, about 340,000 of that primarily in food service. So the impact on the general fund's a million and a half. 2% impact would be 2.4 million on the general fund. And at 3%, the impact is 3.2 million. One of the problems with this, because I just was meeting with special ed today, that we have losses in our federal, some of our federal funding sources as well. So when they have a salary increase like IDEA for special ed, their budget is all salaries, mostly instructional aides. And so when we have a salary increase, it pushes aides out of the IDEA budget that we have to pick up with the general fund because of the maintenance of effort issues. So that's what we're kind of looking at right now, kind of making those things work. But that's what salary increases would cost if we do one, anywhere from a million and a half to 3.2 million. We can't go any higher than 3%. Anyway, so that's where we are right now. We will get our certified property values on July 25. We usually get them a day or so before that, but that's the date by law. We do have a meeting to present the proposed budget and tax rate on the 10th of August. And then we will have to publish our budget and tax rate meeting on the 11th to get it in time for the board meeting. Then we would have the hearing to discuss the budget and tax rate the same night that we adopt on the 24th. And then the meeting follows that, and we would adopt the budget and tax rate that night. The fiscal year starts 9/1. Have to have a budget in place before that.
Yes, Mr. Grant?
Can you go to the previous slide, please?
One more.
Increase in revenue, increase expense. Yes. So the projection, without talking about salary increases, is that we will almost be a loss between our increased revenue and our increased expense.
Correct.
Except the insurance part of that.
Correct.
So we're not, I believe that the previous year, before we were looking at raises, we were looking at a deficit, correct?
We were.
About 3 million or 7 million.
And we did end up with a deficit very close to what we were projecting that year. I meant to look that up before I came because I do think it was in the 3 to 4 million dollar range as well. But we actually did better in some respects because while that was showing up, it's that amount for the operating budget, we had some projects rolled forward that hadn't been completed, like the food service. We completed it with this year's budget and still kind of came in at that same level or a little bit better.
So we anticipated a $3 million deficit, and we did a 3% raise.
Yes, we did.
And we're projecting a flatline budget this year.
Right.
Close, okay.
Right. And I do take out, as I put the salary increases in, as I was looking at that last couple of days and calculating the savings, because I go ahead and put some of the, about half of what we've had in savings the year before, we had, because we've had such a difficult time filling our auxiliary positions, primarily custodians and food service workers, we've had a 21% salary saving.
Wow.
From what they, their salaries would have been vacancies that we've had. In instructional aides, we've had about 13%. So we've had some significant savings. I will build about half of that into next year's budget, assume part of that. I was watching, I was telling Dr. Kinkanen, I was watching Wichita Falls, and they didn't do that. They have all this money left at the end of the year, but then they didn't, you know, weren't able to use it for things. So try to build in the savings upfront.
Cheryl, you're saying we, just what your savings was based off of people not taking jobs? The custodial and food service?
The lag between, the lag between a resignation and a hire. You've got some lag.
20% less than we anticipated, but only because we didn't have people on positions.
Well, and not, not less than we anticipate, because I anticipated some of that, not quite 21%, but I did, I think I made a budget for about a 6% or 7% savings, and it came out 21%.
Mr. Davis, do you have any questions, discussion? Mr. Badania?
No.
Mr. Gillery?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yeah, I do have a question. It might be for Kinkanen though, before she.
She's coming back.
Back, going back to the school safety issue, I know you gave, I know you gave us a dollar amount, but if we were to put an officer at every school based on how many we employ today, how many would we be short?
Thank you for the question. We met with Chief Williams and Dr. Warren and some other staff, and we calculated 12 short. So with 12, with adding 12 officers, deducting the 375,000, and then cut, we thought of cutting three security guards, we would end up with that about 270 that Cheryl shows in additional expenses. So.
Adding 12 and cutting two.
It's adding 12 SROs at a higher pay rate than what we're paying, because if you'd looked into the, in the compensation study, we're about $6,000 behind on SROs. So that would mean, that was with increasing salaries.
And just for clarity for everyone, the state is asking us to, to.
They're requiring.
Employ someone at a $15,000 a year salary to protect our kids.
Well, they're asking for an armed security guard or other. You can have an SRO. You can ask for an exception and have a different kind of plan with, like armed, I think they call them marshals. So what, our estimates are based on SROs. And those, the rates that you saw in the compensation study were from some of the districts. We haven't always had those rates, by the way. Tasby has not been able to provide those in the past, but they have provided them this year. Not every district on that list has school resource officers. Many school districts contract with their municipalities for SROs or other kinds of security. But we, we have our officers, and so, and there were some districts that do, but not all of those do. I think you'll see next month, we're going to come back with a presentation on that new requirement for you, and we're going to gather some additional information that Elizabeth is helping us with so that you can see salaries in the local area that are non-school district salaries and vacancies. And yes, we're concerned about just even being able to find position, you know, people to man this.
You're going to have to get creative. So I just want to say how much I appreciate the work you all are doing.
Well, thank you. The, it's coming, interesting, it's interesting time.
Mr. Patton, do you have any further discussion, question?
No, ma'am.
Well, Cheryl, thank you for this. I know that you, I remember many a budget presentation, your predictions were always a little bit more spot on than comptrollers or anyone else's. So I really do appreciate your attention to detail and yeah, all of your hard work.
I hope we get some, a little bit better news, but I'm not, real confident.
Thanks.
We wish we could.
Okay. If everyone is okay, I will take item number 12 next, which is consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on the schematic design of South Waco Elementary School and receive an update on the design development of Kendrick Elementary. Gloria Barreda, and then we'll move back to item number 12 after this.
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
And board members. I guess you're just timed for some, it's ready, you're ready for something different, some pretty pictures or something. So.
Yes.
So in the May meeting, we brought before you the Kendrick, the plans for Kendrick Elementary School, and you approved the schematic design. At this meeting, we're asking you to approve the schematic design for South Waco Elementary School. And then in a subsequent meeting, we'll be coming back to you with Kendrick design development, let you get a preview of the Kendrick design again today. So I'm going to just let our wonderful architects take it from here and just remind you that at this time, we don't have our cost numbers associated with these plans. We're working on those. And when we come back to you at design development, that's when we bring it all together for you.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Gloria.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
We got some pretty pictures for you all tonight. So hopefully we'll get through it quick, but please, you know, let me know if you all have any questions along the way. So quick agenda here. We'll look through, as Gloria mentioned, the schematic design update for South Waco. And then we did also meet earlier this week with Southern Little League. So just take a few minutes to recap that at our good meeting with them, talk about the Kendrick Elementary School progress, and then just again, reminder of that project schedule and answer any questions. So site plan here for South Waco Elementary School. You'll see we've adjusted that construction, parking, and laydown area, as we had talked about with Southern Little League. I'll get into that here in a little bit. But I'll start off, if you look kind of at the top of your screen there, you've got the main entry next to the new addition. I guess you guys can't see my pointer, so I'll do my best here to just talk about it. But in our previous version, we had actually the administration addition as a separate kind of third portion of the addition work. And as we were looking at it kind of holistically with the campus, as well as from a cost standpoint, and really looking at some of the construction efficiency, obviously, the fewer additions you can do the better. And so we were able to consolidate that, thank you. We were able to consolidate that to two additions. And you'll see on the left, we've actually pulled that main entry into the larger addition. And you'll see in the floor plan how that actually works out really well from a entry and a flow and access to the school standpoint. And so again, with the rest of the site, we maintain the majority of the parking up front, the parent drop-off loop. We are exploring some alternative solutions with the city on a deceleration lane, potentially have a less costly solution there to improve the queuing situation there along Gurley. So we may not have to, you know, build a 26-foot wide, you know, separated queuing lane, but potentially just use some of the existing paving that's there, be a little bit more cost-effective, but still give several hundred extra feet of queuing space there on the site. And then you'll see, we also are keeping, and I'll talk about it with the Little League update in a little bit, but we're able to maintain actually three of their existing fields now during construction. So revised floor plan here, again, quite a bit different than what you may have seen previously. That red box that you have up on the top left of the image, that's your administration wing, right next to your main entry. So you come in through the secure entry vestibule there at the top with the arrow. And right at the front, we've got our library and our administration wing. So we worked with the PEC to understand exactly how that organization was going to work. We got some, some really great strategies for the shared spaces there with the maker space and the library. And then you've got your grade levels as you get into the building there in that dark blue color. So pre-K and kinder in your new addition. And then the existing building will be all your other grade levels, so first through fifth. And then we do keep four PTech classrooms there at South Waco. Special education is there kind of in the middle in light blue. And then as you work your way in the right in the plan, you've got the art and the music rooms. You renovated it and expanded cafeteria as well as the gymnasium there at the bottom. You'll see on the right, the kitchen and the gymnasium are called out as alternates. What we are looking at right now is breaking those scopes out to really get a good understanding of what the cost of the work is. And it really just gives us the flexibility to understand, okay, we know this scope of work's going to cost this much, this scope of work's going to cost this much. Make sure that we, you know, our intent is to accept that alternate. We know, you know, gym is a critical function of the, of the school. But it allows us to really understand where those dollars are going in the budget if we bid that out as an alternate. Same thing with the kitchen. That's a big scope of work that's very unique. So being able to have that number and really understand it with the CMR is really helpful. Any questions on the floor plan?
Where was the former office?
Sorry?
Go ahead.
Where was the former office?
On the previous layout?
Yeah, yeah, on the old, on the, the previous, is that the spad?
Won't work on that one. But if you see up here, it was, it was actually over kind of where the art and music room are, the existing, existing entry was.
Right there.
Right there where the art and music room are. So you actually, in the current facility, you actually walk into the corridor before you actually get.
To the office.
Yeah. So we pulled that away. We give them a dedicated secure entry with the appropriate administrative suite up at the front. So you've got principal AP, counselor, clinic, all of that right there in one place.
Thank you.
All right.
Can I ask a question? Can you help explain to me, so I know I see the admin, the library, and then right next to that, I see kind of these, what I'm assuming are doors for second grade. Is that two sets of doors there?
So the.
Like second grade, yeah, the little.
Yeah, the corridor that kind of comes this way and then up into here.
I'm talking from the outside in.
End of the wing.
End of the wing, yeah.
Yep. So those doors, the ones actually in the classroom wing are existing. We have some existing doors, and we will need to keep those for egress. So they will be, you know, closed and locked as any exterior door would on a, on a school facility during the day. But for a fire egress, you know, those classroom neighborhoods have to have multiple ways to get out. And so that's, at every classroom wing that you see, existing or new, we're going to have those.
Okay. So, okay, I was just trying to.
That's existing.
Yeah.
The white door.
Yes, the white doors.
Those are existing.
These ones here or?
No, up there on the top.
Yeah, those are, those are.
Those are existing. Okay, great. That was my one question. Thank you.
Any other questions on the floor plan? All right. And we were able to present some exterior concepts to the project executive committee, the principals and the administration. And this was the option that we selected. So again, this is as if you were parking in that front lot and walking towards the main entry, just showing a little bit of a material separation between the existing building and the new. We do want to bring in some of that existing brick, make sure it feels like a cohesive campus at the end of the day. But you never want to put brand-new brick and 40-year-old brick next to each other. You're never going to make them look exactly alike. So we're going to use a little bit of stone at the front to help kind of provide some separation there. Some lower-scale overhangs, it'll serve as some nice protection for students waiting for pickup. And then some, of course, some building signage there to really help identify, you know, that main entry and give the school some identity there on the corner. So we'll continue to develop the exterior concepts. And hopefully in some future board meetings soon, we'll come back with a little bit more imagery, both interior and exterior. But just wanted to share what the PEC selected for South Waco today. All right. And the quick Southern Little League update, as I mentioned, we had some great discussion with them earlier this week. We are still on track for them to be able to. We are still on track for them to be able to come back and have all four fields by the start of the 2025 season. So just the one season that would be impacted. And we're really thinking, I know this graphic actually shows the T-ball and the softball field being impacted, but we're, we're pretty sure now after the, after this week's meeting, that the T-ball field will actually not need to be taken over during construction. CMR is evaluating that, just a couple more little details on that. But we're thinking the amount of construction, lay down and access that they would need, they would really only need to take over the softball field. And we're gonna continue, we're gonna continue to explore ways that we might be able to turn that back over sooner. So trying to be, you know, we don't wanna make too many promises upfront, but definitely looks like the T-ball field's gonna come back. And then we're gonna see if we can get the softball field turned over pretty quickly. But we're, it's good news that it feels like it's gonna be much less impactful to their facilities than we thought. Any other questions related to that? I don't have any fun budget spreadsheets for y'all, I'm sorry. So Kendrick update, again, this is also gonna look pretty different than the last site plan that you saw. We did have some continued conversations with the PEC about the existing and the new facilities. And so we've actually modified the site design a little bit in order to maintain the existing gymnasium. Now that is saving some costs and it's also giving the district that extra facility on site to use, whether it's for indoor recess if it's raining or community events. You know, there's costs associated with demolition too. And so if we're able to, you know, not have to do that work, it's just gonna improve the overall budget. So we are maintaining the main entry off of Kendrick. You'll see we have a nice extended drop off lane there off of, off of Kendrick Lane. The main entry is still coming, facing that street, maintaining a lot of those existing live oaks along the street there, really important for the team and for the PEC as well. But then as we look at how we've kind of tweaked some of the parking, we were able to pull even more of that primary parking up front towards the main entry. And we just have some overflow spots over on the, the right side of the image there. And then down at the bottom left, you'll see the bus loop again, keeping parents and buses separate. But having a few spots over there by the bus loop, which is actually also where your kitchen is. So some of your kitchen staff and janitorial staff could park over there, have some dedicated spots and get them close to where they're gonna be working. And then of course, the big field at the bottom with some play areas. But other than that, again, same parts and pieces, we just continue to massage them over time as we've, you know, worked with the PEC to really hone in on their goals.
Question, you mentioned you're gonna keep the existing gym. So you will build a new gym too? This will just be a multi-purpose space?
Yep. So we're carrying, again, we're, we're breaking the cost of the new gym out as an alternate in this one, just so we're carrying that cost and we can identify it separately. But we, you know, we're designing the gym through contract documents. So there will be a design for it. Again, we're gonna show it as an alternate, just so we can be, you know, super clear on the costs associated with that work. But right now, not having to demolish the existing gym, uncover who knows what behind the walls and, you know, cap, cutting cap utilities and all that work. It's really not that old of a building. So it does still have some life left in it. We do have costs in the budget to provide some light renovations to make sure it's gonna serve the district for the next, you know, 15, 20 years.
So you said, so you said the existing gym would be a multi-purpose room?
It'll basically remain as a gym, yeah.
So is there not a connection from the May building to the gym?
We're not showing it on this site plan. It's a little small, but we are gonna provide a covered walkway that's behind the secure fence. So if this campus chooses to use it, you know, during the day, they'll have a protected walkway to get to and from the main building. But the, the new gym alternate will be directly attached to the new campus. So their new building will be fully contained.
In the first version, we had, we had shown we were tearing it down. When the design changed, there's opportunity to leave it. It's a pretty nice new, newer facility. So we just wanna see what it looks like. We can always take it down if we decide to and if it's an eyesore. But I, it, it gives you some flexibility for rainy days and such, or for pre-K. Wait, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. I said, if you don't need to tear it down, it's a great resource.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So, and then the, the, getting that pricing, you know, to be clear, we, we're over budget on these elementary schools. And they're not, you know, we were creative with Waco High School. It's a bigger facility. There's more opportunity to find savings. There are fewer opportunities to find savings in an elementary school. So we wanna see what that pricing is, but I will tell you that I want that gymnasium in there. And so we're gonna, we're gonna keep massaging this and we're gonna see what the numbers come in as. So we're just wanna see the pricing on it.
So, I'm sorry, question. So as of right now though, we're not using that existing gym as the gym, right?
Correct, correct. It just is a, it's a good gym for flex space, right.
Dr. King Cannon, do we know when the existing gym was built?
I think those were built around 2012. Does anyone know that off the
Is that when, is that the time?
2002. Oh, I was off a decade.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And so Kendrick was one of, I'm sorry, she would know. Yeah. So Kendrick was one of those 2082.
That look alike.
I mean, those are nice gyms.
They are nice gyms, but they are not incorporated into the main building. And they're not as big as you would want a full-sized gym at your elementary schools. And, and new elementary schools, new modern elementary schools have gymnasiums, have full-sized gymnasiums. So back in the day, they didn't build, you didn't build a gymnasium within elementary school. That's why you see those added on to, or those additions that were added. And so you'll see districts going back and adding those to campuses, maybe not in the same way that we did. But so it'd be nice to get it in while we're doing it and get it right.
Yep. And as Dr. King Cannon mentioned, we're continuing to massage the plan and improve the efficiency. We've, we've been able to work with the layout to bring the square footage down a little bit. Again, trying to save costs where we can, but still maintain the overall program and the, you know, the, the wants and needs from the PC and from the user groups. And so, you know, we've maintained those individual classroom neighborhood pods. We've maintained the access and the overall, you know, concept and layout. But you, you've seen the kind of parts and pieces push around a little bit. So I'll point out, starting on the left image there, you see the main entry at the top with your administration wing. Again, secure entry vestibule with the library there on the right of the image and your admin wing there on the left in the red. Coming in, you'll have your nice, larger, open volume entry space with a main corridor access. All your shared resources are gonna be there at the front. So your cafeteria, access to your art and your music and your gym and your library and your maker space all along that main corridor. And then as you go up the, what's the diagonal portion there on the right, you get into those individual classroom neighborhoods. Again, those are the, that's the two-story portion of the, of the building. So we will have, of course, an elevator there that serves the second floor as well as a central staircase that the students and staff will be able to use throughout the day. And then some additional staircases for egress. But you'll see, we have second, third, fourth, and fifth upstairs. And again, we were able to inch this down quite a bit, reduce a little bit of the overall building footprint, which means less roof, less foundation, more efficient structure. So we're doing what we can. Again, cost and budget is always a challenge, but we're doing what we can to, you know, make this efficient and keep all the program in the, in the building.
It's gonna be beautiful.
It's gonna be beautiful.
I know you've insulted the teachers and principals, but it's heaven, the teacher's lounge, the gym, and music.
Yeah, we, we, so the, the gymnasium, actually, those, a lot of those spaces are constructive CMU. And actually, I think in the gym's case, it's 12-inch CMU block. And we're actually using it as structural CMU. So one of the things we look at from a cost standpoint too is, can you make that wall do a little bit of double duty? So of course, between acoustically sensitive spaces, we always make sure that we're considering that. Yeah. You don't wanna hear kids hanging on the, you know, instruments during your lunch break, so.
Yes, Mr. Ochoa?
So you said the square footage came down. I'm looking at, at last month's what you gave us. And it looks similar to this month.
It's, it's not a lot, but yeah.
And like my brain can't put it together if I were to overlay it with
Yeah. So the, I'll say the two, the two aren't gonna be to scale necessarily to one another. So that's probably part of it is the, this image isn't the same scale as the original one. All the programs are the same square footage. So we didn't, we didn't shrink classroom size. We didn't shrink, you know, sizes of the spaces. But we were by stacking additional space on the second floor. And then by kind of reworking where we had the special education wing and then where Inspiracion came in, kind of there in the center, we just created a more efficient footprint. So, you know, we looked at corridor widths, we looked at, you know, overall, just organizationally getting less what we call, you know, gross square footage space and that, that circulation factor. We were able to bring that percentage down a little bit. So again, I'm not saying we went from 90,000 to 80,000, but you know, we took, you know, 500 to 1,000 square feet out here and there, just to, to make it as efficient as we can. And that, that's pretty typical through the course of the design process that you tighten that efficiency up.
Mr. Patton?
This is for Dr. King Cannon. Looking at the special ed wing, do we have a special classroom, like SLC or something there that we're giving all that space to?
Sure. We have multiple classrooms. I couldn't cite them off the top of my head for this particular school, but our special ed staff was involved in the design process.
Cause it looks very similar to what they're doing with South Waco.
Correct. And equity, equity was the goal, right? So we planned with South Waco for the same spaces so that they're similar. Other than the PTEC and the Inspiracion, everything else was designed to be as equitable as possible, given that South Waco is an existing building and Kendrick's new. And you could probably speak to exactly which classrooms were designed in here, but every program was considered.
Yeah, we've got that light blue area that you see just to the bottom of the library is your special education wing. So we've got a couple of functional academic classrooms in there, some sit, dyslexia, speech. There's a whole suite essentially of support spaces dedicated to that program.
Does that include offices?
Some of them are off, like larger office spaces. And then there's Yeah, well, for, for teachers and I think there's also some like support spaces in there, like, yeah, and dedicated restrooms, changing rooms, things like that.
There's a lot in there that we, we, we talked about and planned for and things that we don't currently have. So if you come from working in an older building, you know, sometimes you end up working in a closet, right? And so we have
We're on stage.
Are on stage, right? And that's what you do in elementary schools, but we have spaces for people in here. Yep.
Great. Well, then I will entertain a motion to review, approve schematic designs for South Waco Elementary School.
I move that we approve the schematic designs for South Waco as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any further discussion, Mr. Grant? Any further discussion?
No, sorry.
No, it's great. Mr. Davis? None? Mr. Vedanya? Mr. Guillory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yeah, I just have a question from my own curiosity. So my parents went to the original university high school. And I worked with a lady who worked there before it closed and the computer lab had two outlets, I think, in it or something like that. Do you do any sort of forward projections, you know, assuming this school's gonna last us 40 years, on what might, something we can't see today that, that might?
Yeah, that's, that's the, kinda, always the question in the back of our minds is, in, in school design, is how do you, how do you build a building for now, but also for 50 years from now, right? And it's, it's really about providing that flexibility. So right now, space and technology and kind of the combination of how all that comes together is really important. And so we think, you know, students are now pretty much one-to-one devices. So the electrical load, the networking and the wifi, I mean, all of those things that 20 years ago, we never would have imagined that, you know, a first grader was gonna be walking around with a Chromebook. You know, we are planning for the ability for the campus to expand for, you know, different grade levels to be able to have that flexibility. So we build in those flexible spaces, the collaboration rooms, and we give them the, the power and the technology. And we try to build that in as much as we can for that future growth.
And I think you, you asked specifically about the computer lab. We, Jerry asked for 40 spaces for computers in that lab, which seemed high to me. But we're, we're wanting to combine some classes and we now have the online testing requirement as well. So it'll have plenty of spaces for an elementary school.
Yeah, the part is we are changing the physicalness of the buildings, is I, not that we're not looking at long-term life of the building now, but we're not necessarily building out of CMU in every single wall. So the ability to change in the future is greater as we're looking at a structural steel frame with metal studs, drywall. It's a, it's lower first cost, still lasts long, but it allows more adaptation in the future at a lower cost.
Two questions.
Yes, Mr. Patton.
Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Do we have portables at either of these schools?
We do at both.
Will they be removed?
Yes.
Cause portables aren't portable. And we're gonna have these nice looking schools. I really don't want portables cluttering up the playground. Second question on your designs here, gentlemen, can you point out where you have storage space?
I don't know if I'm gonna be able to hit all of it off the top of my head, but since we didn't label every space here, but I'll say
I'm not just talking office, I'm talking like for the school.
Globally, yeah. So there is storage in the majority of the learning spaces in the classrooms. There's some casework, so it's not gonna show up at this scale, but we do have
What do you mean by casework? I'm sorry.
So cabinets, countertops, lowers and uppers. We worked with the project executive committee. We did some school tours and we actually were able to, you know, create almost like a custom sort of casework section, I'll say, that is gonna be in each classroom. So there's dedicated, you know, teacher and student storage, you know, for backpacks and things like that that we're looking at, at the classroom level. The library, of course, is gonna be outfitted to support the required number of books that the district has asked for.
Choir room, gym?
Music room will have a similar, you know, approach to
They have a storage, like a closet?
Music has its own storage closet.
They have a lot of equipment.
Yeah. So music actually has its own dedicated storage closet.
Cause the PE room had their own dedicated storage closet.
PE has its own dedicated storage and office, as well as two independent restrooms. Art has a separate
Cause restroom is in the PE room? That's awesome. I like that.
Yeah, there's two restrooms there. Of course, we have like your general building table and chair storage, you know, for your cafeteria and things like that. There's additional storage built in through some of the admin. We have, you know, we have it kind of sprinkled throughout. We know, my wife actually is a second grade teacher. So I know how much stuff comes home and goes back and sometimes doesn't go back.
We need lots of stuff. Thank you. Those are my questions. So there won't be portables on those campuses?
No. There better not be any.
Last slide up here was just a quick highlight of the schedule. Again, wrapping up design here in October for both campuses. Notice of proceed for construction should be about that December to January timeframe. And construction for about a year to 14 months.
Okay, great. Well, I am, we're gonna take a vote here in just a second, but I am really thankful to hear that our administration, although the gymnasiums are put there as alternates that the administrations desire and are, everyone's desire is to really incorporate that into the building. Cause I think that would, is needed for students not to have to walk out through the rain and the cold and the heat, but to have that incorporated in. And it just is, to me, seems like a, a little bit more of a secure building from that, from that vantage point. So
I'm just appreciative. I'm new to the board and coming in with different views and perspectives. But I appreciate the guy, the fact that you guys have taken the details of things like I'm asking. It's really important for, for elementary schools at least, for those spaces to be stored and, and for quiet spaces. And you don't hear their gym and you don't hear the music room. I mean, those are really thoughtful things. And I mean, I think that's really cool. Appreciate it.
Great. Well, with that, we will
I do have one question.
Okay.
About the maintenance moving forward, like I'm more thinking about the elevators. So like our students who may not be able to go up elevators, what is our plan to kind of maintain that? Cause I know I go to some of our campuses and the elevators are down. And I wonder like, what do our students do who can't walk up the stairs? So I was just wondering, is it a plan in place to kind of keep those things, you know, up to date and, and maintenance?
Good question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, Mr. Davis. We have a elevator maintenance program. I'm required to do it by the state. And so, we, we have one and we are working on getting better performance because we know we've had some issues, specifically at Indian Spring this year. And the elevator worked, but it took a really long time for them to get it taken care of for us, so.
I appreciate that. Yeah, this is really important. So, I just hope we stay on top of that, that maintenance program for sure.
Yes, sir.
Okay, with that, I will, um, take a vote. So, all in favor, um, to approve schematic designs for South Waco Elementary School is presented, uh, with an, an eye, yes? Sorry.
All in favor?
All in favor. Thank you.
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
First and second on that, right?
Yeah. Vedanya and Guillory, yeah.
Got it.
I had to go back and try to remember. Did we do this? Yes, we did. Okay, uh, moving on back to item number eleven, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action, uh, for regarding Indian Spring Middle School, GW Carver Middle School consolidation closure and renaming. Dr. Ken Cannon?
Okay, I'll see if I can explain this succinctly. Um, when you close a campus, you, um, have to notify TEA and they close the campus code. Every campus has a campus code. So, we notified TEA in January of our intent to close Indian Spring in the fall, um, when we opened the new GW Carver. However, they requested a review meeting because they look at accountability to make sure you're not, um, playing games, doing shell game. And so, Cheryl Davis, Dr. McDurham, and some other staff met with TEA and they reviewed our data and information, visited with us, and then they came back and advised us that they would not allow us to, uh, approve the closure of the Indian Spring campus code because it has the, um, lower academic accountability history. So, um, what we need to do is to close the code for GW Carver Middle School and rename the Indian Spring Middle School campus code as GW Carver Middle School. So, it's, um, a little convoluted, but that gets us there. And, um, so that, that accountability falls, follows the school number. So, Carver will have the Indian Spring number in the new building and be called Carver with your approval.
Dr. Ken Cannon, I just want to make sure I clarify. Just want to make sure we all understand here. So, because Indian Springs had a lower academic performance, we cannot close down their school code.
Correct.
So, we're just gonna rename Indian Springs to GW Carver Middle School. So, the new school will be named GW Carver.
That is correct. Thank you for clarifying. That is the goal. That has always been, um, the desire that the Carver name would stay on the building and this, um, does that.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve the administration recommendation, board of trustees approves the code, approves the closing of GW Carver Middle School currently identified as campus code sixteen nineteen fourteen zero four eight, and rename the Indian Spring Middle School currently identified as campus code sixteen nineteen fourteen zero five zero GW Carver Middle School.
So, move.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Uh, is there any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Davis? Okay. Any discussion, Mr. Vedanya? Any discussion, Mr. Guillory?
No.
Any discussion, Mr. Ochoa? Any discussion, Mr. Patton?
No.
Okay, with that, I will entertain, or will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, Carver is going to remain Carver.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Ken Cannon, uh, Mr. Allen, we are moving on to item thirteen, review and discuss technology services update.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam President, Dr. Ken Cannon, members of the board. It's my pleasure to kind of go over a little bit of what we've done in the last three years, give you some context of things that have happened. Um, and, uh, this team that I work on, work with every day is amazing. Um, they do a lot of amazing things, starting in twenty twenty, when I got here in May, in the midst of a global pandemic. Um, and we didn't have enough, uh, computers to hand out to kids. We were taking teacher computers that we had had old ones and we were refreshing them, giving them to kids, um, just to make it to where the kids could go home with them. We didn't even have enough to give one-to-one. We were giving one per family. Um, so, the first thing we did when we got here is I started a survey. Um, and I surveyed all the students and I surveyed the faculty and I surveyed the parents. And one of the things that came back is there, there was really not a district direction for technology at that point. There wasn't a instructional technology direction. Um, one of the things that they wanted was a minimum technology standard for the classroom. And that, um, what we, what we developed from that was a laptop, a monitor, a docking station, um, student computers, a document camera, and then some type of LMS. And we knew going into the pand- pandemic that we needed to have something better than Google Classroom, um, for our kids and for our faculty. And so, um, and our parents, they really wanted, they wanted more, more stuff for our kids to have and they wanted the, the faculty to be better with it. Um, they just didn't know what to, what to have. And so, what we did was we took some action. So, we developed the minimum technology standard. Then we, we started deploying devices. And the first thing I did, one of the first things I did was I bought about eight thousand devices with what they called, um, at that point, Operation Connectivity. And then, um, that evolved into another thing. Um, but we then started looking at what does it take for a teacher to do instruction remotely? Um, and so, we knew we had to have Zoom, so we purchased twelve thousand licenses for Zoom. Um, it was, and then we, we bought Canvas. We did everything we could to try to get us into a better spot. Um, all of these things, the teachers, the, uh, the teachers came together. They really worked hard for the kids. My team worked hard for, for the teachers. Um, we just did a lot of great things for kids. And so, that was twenty twenty, and that was a lot. We did a one-to-one initiative for sixth grade through twelfth grade to go home and a one-to-one in, uh, K through five to be at the schools. But now, since they were in pandemic, we had enough divi- devices for them to go home with them as well. When they came back, that's when we would do a cart solution at the schools and the elementaries. Um, so, when we're looking at twenty twenty-one, we did the survey again. And what we did is we figured out, the students started saying, um, we think the teachers need some help. Um, and it was pretty evident. They were like, they, they really don't know how to teach with, with remotely. They don't know how to teach with computers in the classroom. So, we started thinking, okay, we need to do some purposeful design with training, um, for our teachers. Now, keep in mind, the teachers are still at home. So, we had to do it all, all on demand. And so, I worked together with, uh, Dr. Cornblum and we got together with TCEA, which is Texas Computer Education Association, and they had an on-demand, online, completely online courses that we could offer our teachers. And, uh, that was Google One, Google Two, um, How to Do Canvas, How to Do Seesaw, um, Canvas Educator, Canvas Advanced Educator, Seesaw Educator, Seesaw Advanced Educator, all kinds of classes for our teachers. Um, our parents, over fifty percent of them, they still wanted our kids to have devices because they couldn't afford to give them, to them themselves. So, they wanted to make sure they still had them. And our faculty, even our faculty itself, they, they said, we need more training. We're in an area where we, we don't know how to be online teachers. And they don't really teach you how to do that in school. When they teach you how to be a teacher, they're teaching you pedagogy and things like that, but they're not teaching you how to do that in a completely online environment. So, this was our opportunity to really teach them. Now, as an instructional technologist, I always wanted to infuse technology into, into our lessons, but I didn't want it to be like this. You know, this was not the way to go as through a pandemic. So, um, so we had some action steps that we wanted to do. We, we made sure that we got the training that they needed. Um, we partnered with TCEA. We deployed more devices. Um, we got our, we had to get our network involved and we had to bolster our network to where we had, um, a private fiber. And, uh, that was already in the works when I got here and, um, thank God it was. And it was, it was a joint pay, I believe. We, it was a fifty-fifty pay, I believe. Is that right, Cheryl? And, um, thank God that happened. And then we, we, uh, bolstered up our, our Wi-Fi as well in the classes. And then we thought about it, what's the next step when these guys come back? Well, the first step is gonna be that our parents and our faculty are gonna come back and our principals are gonna have to teach and talk to our parents and they're gonna have to talk to our faculty. So, we created what we called a principal classroom. And actually, uh, Alonzo McAdoo coined that term. Um, and that's the, that's the cafeteria. And so, we knew we needed to make sure that the principals had a classroom to teach the adults. And so, we started going around and making sure that all of the cafeterias had audiovisual and just great sound systems and their ability to walk around and make sure that they could teach adults and get into one situation that was big enough to stay spatially right in a pandemic, but also be, everybody be able to hear and see what was needed. That worked out really well for us, um, but we still, at that point, started thinking, okay, we need to survey again. So, we did it again. And the students, um, and the students, you wanna know how, how to do things, get the student voices. The students kept coming back and they kept saying, hey, um, this is all great, what you're doing, but our classrooms are old and they don't have projectors hung in the classroom. And so, we're like, okay, they're all coming back this year. We need more projectors and, and we have chalkboards still. So, we replaced, I'll get to that in a second. Let me go ahead and tell you what the parents did. The parents said, hey, still do the one-to-one. We still believe in you. We still want everything to happen in our faculty. Um, they said, hey, we need a lot more stuff to teach these kids. We need more devices in the classroom now. I know you're sending these things home, but the kids aren't bringing them with them to, to school. So, we have to start supplying more power cords to the classrooms and things. So, our minimum technology standard keeps evolving over time. And so, then our teachers also in this year, when they came back, they were struggling because they had been online teachers for two years. And there were a lot of them that were still online teachers with the kids still sitting in front of them. And so, we realized we had another issue that we had to face, is how to get them back to blended learning. So, we took some action steps there. Chromebook educator classroom. Um, that class was a, was a, a class that we taught through TCEA. It was an online class again. Um, and it, it actually taught teachers how to teach with every kid having a Chromebook in the class. And it was using it for the class, but not necessarily in the class. So, it made a big difference in how the teachers were perceiving what they had to do with, with instruction, with technology and how to infuse it in their lessons. And so, and then also the remote learning tools that they had and then Google Levels One and Two, obviously, because we're a Google district. Um, and then the classroom upgrades, we replaced, we, uh, replaced two hundred and fifty-six chalkboards in our districts. Um, we hung over a hundred and eighty-six projectors and we put sound up all across the district. We upgraded the teachers' laptops, got, got more student devices out there. Um, and then, one of the things that I'm really proud of, and y'all know that I've done a lot with the libraries, but the hub of the school is the library. And when teachers can bring the kids to the library and see that the library furniture and there's technology in the library and the, the library teacher that's in there, or the librarian that's in there is infusing technology in lessons and how to read, then they get excited about it and they go back and they do the same thing. So, that was another little push. Well, that brought up, uh, having all the kids have all these things and infusing all these lessons and doing everything that we were doing, um, while it was great for the teachers and great for the students, my network guys were, were freaking out, right? Because we created all these holes that we had to fill. And the cybersecurity just, you know, was out, out of control. We, we had to fill every single hole that we had. And, um, having private fiber is great, but it's all on us to make sure that we have it under control. We're not, we don't have AT&amp;T monitoring it or anything. We monitor it. Um, now, it gives us great speed, but we monitor it and we take care of it. Um, we have a disaster recovery site that we didn't have before. And that disaster recovery site is off-site. It's at UHS. And so, if a tornado comes through, God forbid, we have a backup. We didn't have that before. Um, we had a bunch, we have a bunch of, um, security vendors that we use now. They come in and do assessments and they check on us to make sure that we're doing things right. And, um, they also tell us what we're not doing right, because there's something new every, every week, it seems like, that there's a new threat out there. Um, and I'll tell you, and I'm, I'm just gonna preface this with, it's not if we get attacked, it's when. And it's how we respond that's gonna separate us from the rest. And so, we practice response a lot. And one of the things that, that we do and that we're gonna be doing now is start doing active simula- simulations, starting next month. And that's gonna involve doing more and more with, um, actively making phone calls to the people that we need to make phone calls to. And, um, if there's a simulated breach, we can start making those phone calls rather than just saying, here's what we're going to do. This happens. So, it's gonna be an active situation, just like you would an active shooter situation. So, um, instructional technology training, just to get, quantify this for you. That's over seven thousand, just in our top courses, over seven thousand courses have been taught, just this, just in the past three years to our staff. Now, I will say this, that's not just teachers, because we believe everybody is a teacher. Every staff member is a teacher. Everybody educates children, from, uh, paraprofessionals to professionals to secretaries. Everyone has the ability to take these courses. And when they do, if they take the, if they take the Chromebook educator course, they get a Chromebook for them to use as they walk around the school. Doesn't matter what, who they are or what they are. If they take the course, they get that Chromebook to walk around and help other kids learn how to do Chromebooks. So, um, but that's a, that's a great number to quantify that with. And we offer over fifty-one different types of courses now. We started out with five and now we offer fifty-one. Anything from Google to Photoshop. And, um, we just have added on over time. So, um, emergency connectivity funding. The last two years, we've gotten emergency connectivity funding from the FCC and this was put in place, um, to help with COVID. And we've gotten eight point four million dollars worth of devices. And that's, uh, my team and I sitting down, doing this, doing those surveys that we, we have and using those surveys to decide what we need and how we need it. And that involves team, getting all the T-Mobile hotspots that we're able to hand out to every single kid, not just one per family, but every kid. Um, that's getting all the staff devices, new staff devices, that student devices. And these are devices that don't hit our budget. These hit the money that they, this comes straight from the state and, or from the federal government. And so, um, we don't have to budget for that, luckily. And so, eight point four million dollars is a lot of money. I think Cheryl's auditors came in and said that we're one of the largest recipients of, uh, ECF funding. Um, and that's because we, we applied for it and got it. So, um, E-rate, y'all know about E-rate. Y'all know how that works, right? Um, it's kind of a copay type deal. Um, because of our economically disadvantaged, um, we get about a ninety percent discount. And so, to date, we've gotten three point three five, um, million dollars worth and we've had to pay about three hundred thousand dollars of that. So, and that includes our, our leasing of dark fiber, our internet access, and then any kind of infrastructure equipment. In fact, our, uh, equipment for GW Carver that just came in was all E-rated. So, all of our branding switches, all of our, uh, access points, everything for there got E-rated. It didn't hit the bond. Uh, part of it did, our copay did, but not the, not the large part of it, not ninety percent of it. So, um- So this is what keeps me up at night, though, cybersecurity. So just, there's been over 1,600 incidents nationwide. And honestly, kids used to be off limits to the bad actors and are not anymore because of bond money. People know now, the bad actors know now that schools will pay. There's an incident involving Mansfield not long ago where it shut them down. And the internet controls just about everything now, from your phones to your printers to everything. You can't even, if they hack into your, they can get in through just about anything. If they go through your, your camera system and they get to you, to your internet, then they can shut down your phones. Well, you, you can't call home. You know, you can't call parents. You can't do anything. If they shut everything down, you, you're, you're, you're done. And Mansfield was shut down for about two weeks. So the kids are still coming, but they just couldn't do anything with it. So in Texas alone, there's been 175 just since 2016, 175 incidences. And one of those incidences was my former district. And that was a case of social engineering. And social engineering is very interesting because it's not really a case where there's any kind of equipment or anything that any technology person could have done to stop it. They actually made, made a website, they were building schools, made a website that looked exactly like Still Freeman, who was our construction person at that point, and created email addresses that had exactly those people's names. Except instead of StillFreeman.com, they had StillFreeman.org. And they started, they started emailing our comptroller and saying, hey, how are you? Just making sure everything's okay. We got your payment, all this kind of stuff, acting like they're their friends. The day before, we went out on Thanksgiving break, they changed the bank. They asked her if she would change the bank and wire them some money. So she wired them $5, just to make sure the bank got there. All good. Next payment's due right before Christmas. So changed the bank, they, she said, oh, had a misunderstanding. The bank's going to change again. We changed it to this web bank in Florida. Go ahead and wire us the money. Wired them $2 million. $2 million went there. Well, I don't know all the banking laws. I just know that I got a call on Christmas Day from my superintendent. And when that, when that happens, that's never good. So I went in and, with the CFO and I sitting there, and $2 million were gone. And that, and there's only so many days that you have that you can cancel that payment. And they knew we were going on break and that you probably weren't going to be checking emails over that break. And so at that point, you know, that money was gone. And so I immediately got all this, all the information I could get from them and sent that to the FBI. We had the FBI come down. We got Interpol involved. Happened to be some bad actors out of Russia. They, you know, they ended, it was actually a guy in Florida who bought a Mercedes and a Rolex, and we got those back, but everything else was gone. So, and I think they got some of the money back, but not all of it. But anyway, this kind of stuff happens all the time, which is what made me nervous going out for bonds again. But luckily Cheryl's got her, I mean, y'all know Cheryl. I mean, it's, it's not going to happen under Cheryl's watch. I can tell you that. So I, one of the, I went up to Cheryl one time and I, I talked to her about that and she was like, I got this. And I was like, okay, I just want to make sure. But this is why we have these regulations, because of this increase that's going on. House Bill 3834 is required cybersecurity training. You as, as government officials that have been elected, you have to take training. And then there's, if anybody's over 25% of their time on a computer in the district, they have to take training. The data breach notification, actually, that just got changed from 60 days to 30 days. And then Senate Bill 820 requires us to have a cybersecurity plan, which we have. And so a lot of these legislations that are going through, and you're going to see more and more of these come through. We're, we're, there's a Texas K-12 cybersecurity initiative that's going on right now. And it's, it's part of TEA, and there's going to be some things that start happening for us. They're, they're starting to own it a little bit more and starting to help us. And so, but I use this cartoon all the time in trainings when I talk about this because we can have all of the equipment in the world and it takes one teacher that gives their username and password to a kid because he wants to print something. And they say, yeah, 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 just go over there and print it. And then they figure out how to hack into the AC system and turn the heat up to 102. You know, it just takes, it takes one person making one mistake or failing the phishing attempts that we do. We have phishing campaigns that we do all the time, and we send them out and we catch about 30% of our kid, our teachers. And so, but it always goes to a landing page that's a training. Have you been phished? This is what you did wrong. You got to look for misspellings. We never ask you to change your password. These are the types of things that we do. So, but it's just that, it's that human error. And it's that lack of awareness of people. So that's, that's the things that scare me is having 2,000 employees and having, you know, 20 of them make a mistake. Any questions?
Have a question.
Yes.
Go ahead. One, thank you for all y'all's hard work. I, I was working in the district a little bit during the pandemic. Can I remember how everything was on fire because we didn't have computers for the kids? What is the plan to, I guess, keep us up with the times? One of the biggest frustrations was I looked at other districts during the time and they were already, they already had one-to-one devices and their kids already knew how to use them and the parents were already educated. So what are we doing? I know we had to play pretty much catch-up, banana were caught up. What are we doing to stay with the times, our, our kids? Because people assume that the kids knew how to use the devices, but a lot of them were just as lost as some of the older people. So how do we keep ourselves, you know, on track? So if God forbid another pandemic or something hits, we're already, you know, equipped and we don't have to have the same situation over again?
I think, my opinion is that it comes from leadership, right? And so I, I read a lot. And in reading a lot, I, I focus on us. My team gets, gets upset. They say I'm ADD because I, I, I'm always saying, hey, we got to get ready for the next thing. And we have to be, I, I'm always thinking two years from now. And so I think that's where we have to be. We all, in technology, you always have to be two years ahead of where you are right now. And to answer your question about kids, I think that the, the kids that we have today are what I like to call digital born. There's digital natives, and we talk about that all the time. But there's, there's digital-born kids. They're born with a, with an iPad or an iPhone in their hand. They know how to work it, but they don't know how to do it in education. They don't know how to do it appropriately. And so one of the things I've asked our, my instructional technology coordinator this year is to put together a digital citizenship curriculum that we're going to be asking and working with Dr. Kornbleng to put in CSOL and Canvas for all kids to take, no matter what. And we're just going to keep pounding that out with them because it's, there is an appropriateness for that. And before we give them a device, we want them to take that course and be able to understand when it's appropriate to pull out your phone and when it's not appropriate to pull out your phone. Because I don't want to take a phone away, you know? I, I don't know that that's the answer. I don't know that putting your, you know, there's a lot of people that will put a phone in a pouch and they have these pouches now that, that zero out cell phone pouches. I don't know that's the answer either. A kid, a kids are resilient. They'll find a way around that. They'll bring two phones. Go ahead.
I, I want to answer a little more, answer to your question, which is similar to what you see with facilities. And that's having a, a, a refresh cycle, a replacement, lifetime replacement cycle so that you're spending, you're always, you're always working on technology so you don't get to that place that we were back in 2019 and 2020. And that's the same thing with facilities. You have to continually be working on that and you have to put money towards those and those are, you know, you can cut, you can, it's easy to leave that money out of the budget when you want to pay for something else. So that's really the answer, and leadership, like Jerry said, has to be thinking about those things.
And we, we have a, we have a 10-year.
Good planning.
Yeah. One more, one more. The other question I had was more about instruction. It sounded like we kind of are rolling back one-to-one devices and rolling back the use of technology. And I remember juniors and seniors at the time that really didn't understand how to do online coursework, which is scary when you're going to college, that you're going to have to know how to navigate the internet. So just more about equipping our students for success after high school. What are we doing? Like, how are we incorporating technology in their every? And I get we, we have the course that they're going to take, but in their regular day-to-day classes, how is technology being incorporated so that they can be more technology savvy in the future?
Well, we have, we have a number of, our ISs at the campuses are working intensely with our teachers all the time. But we have a number of teachers that are out there right now that do a, they're rock stars, and they do a great job with that. And if you're asking from a district level, do we have a presence, like an instructional technology crew across the district? And we don't.
Not necessarily a crew. I meant more, I don't know if this was, yeah, training and just incorporating technology into your lesson plans that you're giving to the students.
That's what we use, the TCEA model for the on-demand training. That's kind of our substitute for having individuals at the campuses that could use that. We're, we're using those training models for that.
We have the devices and we have some really good, robust systems for technology. But I think your question is fair. I think, you know, it's, integrating technology into lesson design hasn't been the number one priority because we have other things that we've been focused on doing, but that should be a priority, right? As we catch up on some other projects. We've had training for teachers and we're trying to bring them along, but it's not been our major initiative.
Hasn't been embedded into the curriculum yet.
Yeah.
That's an evolutionary part of that.
Is that in the plans, though?
Yeah.
Further out of the pandemic is to, okay.
It, it comes with time on that.
Mr. Grant.
I just want to say, well, thank you. It's amazing what has happened. But it really began with a vision when you came, and I appreciate that. Dr. Kinkanen, you came and looked at our athletic facilities and said they were not up to par, our libraries, and said they were not up to par, and our security syst, our, our technology, that we were just way behind. And it took an investment of not just money, but creating systems that are trustworthy and that you can replicate over and over. And so we have that now in our facilities management, in our technology management. And it's paying off, but it takes time. It takes time to pay off. I do want to say this one thing. We had a, when I was working at a church, I had this kid in our church who was unbelievably talented with computers. This is 2001, way before it was in every hand. And he was very impressionable, too. And he was a student at one of Waco ISD's magnet high schools and showed his friend that he could break, break into the school's network. And he changed grades because it impressed his friends and realized the next day that that wasn't big enough. And so he broke into the Waco ISD servers in 2001, downloaded every parent's social security number because he could and, and then realized, I think I might have made a mistake. And he deleted it within about 10 minutes. Was brought up on federal charges as a 16-year-old kid. We're vulnerable and we don't realize that some of the bad actors might just be really smart kids that want to show off to their friends. And so security, when it wasn't a big deal, was a big deal, and now it's even easier to access. So thank you, because it's a real, it's hit Waco ISD before. We just luckily had a kid that realized, oh, this is a bad idea and I'm not as smart as I think I am. And so luckily, that can't happen anymore.
Well, we, we.
Well, we, we, sorry, 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 sorry. It can't happen. We realized that it has.
We do everything we can to keep it from happening, yes. But, but I will say that kids are resilient and they're super smart and, and they find ways to do things. And, you know, I'm, I'm an educator first and foremost. And I, I do believe that when kids make mistakes, it, it's better that they get a school consequence than they get a permanent consequence on their record if we can teach them how to do it and then hire them to, you know, help us, you know, so.
I want to brag on Jerry a little bit. Jerry deserves all the credit. He got here and he got busy. And we got, we were blessed along the way with money and he applied for that money and made, went out there and made sure we got it. So we're in much better position with our devices, and so I'm grateful. Thank you. And I'll tell you this picture right here. This young man, I was telling, I was, this is career day at, was this, I think it was Cedar Ridge. And just funny story because it's hilarious. So I was telling the kids that I thought I was going to teach kindergarten, but kindergarten kids are really hard. And he, he was, he was agreeing with me and was telling me that little kids are demons. And he was very animated in his conversation with me, so that's why I'm laughing so hard. It was quite hilarious.
This is the little boy.
This is him. It was fun. He, he had some experiences with some little kids that were challenging, so anyway, that's random.
I will say that, that I cannot brag enough on the team of people that I have. And then also the support that I've gotten, not only from the board, but also from my, the leadership team that Dr. Kinkanen has put together and how we have worked together as a team to make sure that the kids get what they need as far as technology. And, you know, going to Cheryl and asking for money is not always easy, but she makes it happen when, when she knows it's the right thing to do, so. And I'm thankful for that.
Mr. Vedanya, do you have any comments for discussion? Mr. Gilery, any discussion? Mr. Ochoa?
Yeah, I just have a few questions that's in a comment. So yeah, thank you for the job you're doing. Really grateful for the work you've done and really looking forward to all your ideas that are coming. To Jonathan's point, when I started teaching, I, I feel like I could say this now. The wifi password at, at AJ Moore was Bulldog. And the student figured that out pretty fast. And when he got in trouble, he said, well, let me guess, is the password at, at University of Trojans? And the technology people looked at each other because it was. And it was Lions, I think, at, at Waco High. So I'm guessing they're a little bit more complicated now.
I hope so.
Hopefully. Jerry's going to text, like, we need to change that tomorrow. Yes, so, you know, we spoke, I, I, I mentioned that whenever I think of someone hacking into a school, I picture Ferris Bueller logging in and changing his days. But a couple of us attended the cybersecurity workshop at the Tasby Conference last week. And we were reminded of LA Unified School District last year. Was it last year or a year before that? And where their whole network just got completely shut down. And they were telling stories of, of their team trying to do password resets for half a million students and 70,000 staff while they were trying to rebuild their network at the same time. So you're the guy that we definitely hope we don't hear from. So I appreciate your, your, your work. I do have a question, though. When you said our, so we have the off-site facility. Is that, how often is that backed up? Or do we do backups?
Nightly.
Nightly. And then as far as patches and updates? I know some are more important than others, but often do we do those?
Depends, but we do weekly patches and updates. Every Wednesday, we do updates. It's a dedicated hours from 5 until midnight. So my team, we started that this past year where we do from 5 to midnight on Wednesdays are our dedicated times. So the network may go down. So the network may go down. So we try not to have any kind of activities going on on Wednesday nights. But if there is something, we just ask that somebody put in a work order and we'll try to keep that open. So, but yeah.
Mr. Patton, any discussion? I had one question. We were, Chat G P T is kind of a buzz. And I was talking to some professors at Baylor and they were talking kind of about, you know, there is some software that teachers can use to kind of run different articles or different assignments that the students turn in kind of through the system to see the likelihood of it being A I generated. And I was wondering, do our teachers have access to any of that? Is that something?
We have, we have plagiarism protection on a lot of the stuff they turn in through Google. The A I protection is a whole different ball of wax. That is a new thing. And it's, it's, you know, A I's been around forever. I mean, we use it every day with Alexa and Siri and, you know, maps. So, I mean, it's just whether or not, I think our teachers are going to have to get used to using it for their classrooms and helping them differentiate their lesson plans to see the benefits of it. They'll also be able to tell, knowing, it's going to change the way we do education. It really will. It, it's going to have to. So rather than having kids go home and write a paper, they're going to have to write the paper somewhere in a, in a secured environment so that they can't do, or they're going to have to handwrite it without a, a device or something like that. There's going to be some kind of way to do it. Or use Chat G P T to write the best paper, some way. I mean, there's, there's going to be a new way to do it. But as far as A I detection, that's not cheap. So is it out there and is it available? Yes. Is it something that we have looked at? Yes. Is it something that we have? No.
Okay. Yeah, I was just wondering where we were in that. I know that Chat G P T is kind of gaining a little bit more momentum. Anyway, I think with technology, we all know that it is changing at the speed of light. And it seems like every day there's kind of, kind of in the same way that you're updating the cybersecurity, we need it weekly at least, I think.
I think that's going to be something that we're going to have to work closely with C N I on to make sure that if it's embedded in the lessons and how it's embedded and how it's used and how we're looking at it. Because it can be a very useful tool for our teachers.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think.
It can actually build rubrics. It can do everything that you need as, it can make your life a ton easier as a teacher.
Yes.
It can also make your life harder, you know? It just depends on how.
Yeah, I was thinking more from the student perspective, turning in work and stuff that. But I do agree, I think there is a benefit that our teachers could have in terms of using that kind of as a template.
Solution of technology.
Template.
Yes. Mr. Vedania and I actually met a lady at the conference who was using Chat G P T to do her, to do lesson plans and it was pulling teaks it was doing. So if you think about it, the amount of time saved from a, from an educator's point of view.
The more specific that you ask it, that ask the questions, the better it can be at writing those things for you as a teacher. And so it could, it can really benefit you as a teacher in, in time-saving efforts. So, but again, that's something I have to work with Dr. Kornbleng on so we can make sure that we, as a district, have a system and a standard.
Great. Is there any further discussion?
I will be saying, I would like to say next month I'll be bringing you an interlocal agreement that's a shared technology services agreement with D I R. So that we can start getting some free stuff from D I R for cybersecurity. So that's coming. So when it comes, just approve it, that'd be great.
Thank you so much, Mr. Allen. I appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to item number fourteen, consider, discuss and take appropriate action regarding designation of a delegate and alternate for the twenty twenty-three Texas Association of School Boards Tasby Delegate Assembly. This is a delegate that is nominated that would go and help guide the legislative, not lobbying, what is that called?
Advocacy.
Advocacy, thank you, for Tasby. Really kind of a neat experience when you go there with delegates all throughout, representing every school district in the state of Texas. You kind of hear what is kind of on the cutting edge of legislation. Yeah, it's just, it's really, it's kind of a fun time to meet different people in and throughout the state of Texas. So wanted to see if there was anyone who would be interested in that. You want, okay. It's every year we, we vote on that, but I was.
Is it just a one-day deal?
Yeah, it's a one-day deal, a couple hours. You meet in our region. So you'll meet with the, another delegate from another, from our Region Twelve, have lunch together. And from there, you'll go in and go into the big delegate assembly. I personally would love to nominate Jeremy Davis because I know that this is kind of a legacy role for his district. Norman Manning had it before and did a great job. Norman would always come back and give us reports of kind of what is new and coming out and always really excited. So I, should I, do I do emotion or do, how do I do this?
It's an action item, so you need to.
First and second? Okay, so I move, oh, that we nominate Jeremy, excuse me?
Oh, I said, no, I was, I was like, did he okay?
He, he okayed it, he okayed it, he okayed it. I didn't just throw him out there. I looked at him and he gave me the nod and a thumbs up, so I said, okay. And an alternate, yes. Jose, okay, Jose, yes. So I move that we approve Jeremy Davis, excuse me, Mr. Davis as a delegate and Jose Vedania for, as an alternate for the twenty twenty-three Texas Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly. Thank you, Mr. Vedania?
Second.
Mr. Gilery? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Davis and Mr. Vedania. It is, it is kind of exciting when you kind of see everyone there. So Elizabeth, are there any announcements?
Online registration is open now for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. I'll just spread the word up to all your neighbors, all your friends. Parents taking this bit of time during their summer to complete this step helps both our campuses and many of our district departments from transportation, nutrition services to C N I and their planning for the new year. So we're really, you're going to see a push, we're trying to get more folks to start that online registration process. Campus assisted or in-person registration will be available beginning of the week of July seventeenth. But right now the focus is that online registration. We want everyone to enjoy their quintessential summer celebrations heading into the July fourth holiday. Beginning July fifth, our communications team will begin pushing out back-to-school information to families. They've created a one-stop-shop webpage that will be shared out and updated regularly and families will start seeing that again on July fifth. It'll be available at www.wacoisdboard.org.
Okay. Okay, great. I did want to let everyone know that this, gosh, when was that now? We went to the Tasby Summer Leadership Institute and everyone was in attendance. Mr. Davis has a very valid excuse for not being there. He was on his honeymoon, so he should not be there. But the rest of the board attended and got some really valuable information on some of these sessions, just really re-envisioned and reinvigorated for the good work that we're doing here with our students. And Mr. Gilery is wearing one of the lovely shirts that Elizabeth, thank you, that you, it was a team, yeah, too. It was funny because I won't name the, the names, but some of our trustees were talking about how we needed a zip-up like, not a hoodie, but a little zip-up jacket. And I thought, we don't need a jacket. But after sitting here, I think, yeah, we probably do need a little zip-up jacket, so.
Some of us are enjoying it.
I am freezing. So, but thank you for that. I, I appreciated the shirts. They're comfy.
Please don't forget to sign up for the tours. If you could do that tonight, that'll set us up well for next week.
Okay, and that we will be going in to closed session. So the Waco ISD Board of Trustees will now go into closed session at nine o'clock exactly. Hold on one second, let me get my little thingy. An end of the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code. Sorry. Chapter five five one, Personnel Matters, Section five five one point zero seven four. You don't have to stick around, no action will be taken afterwards. At nine twenty-seven.